If the COVID-19 coronavirus affects one of us, it affects all of us.
It does not discriminate based on race or ethnicity.
We are in this together, and when we work together, we are stronger as a community. Each person that has accurate and timely information about COVID-19 not only helps him or herself, but it's helping the entire county.
That's why Hillsborough County needs your input in the anonymous Stay Safe Survey. Your feedback will help Hillsborough County provide you and your loved ones with necessary information and resources to get through this COVID-19 pandemic together.
It takes just a few minutes. I've taken the survey, and now I challenge you to be a community player. Text STAY SAFE to 73224, or visit hcflgov.net/staysafeinput to take the survey.
So due to our closures of all of our congregate dining centers and senior centers because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have 26 different locations that we're still providing meal services for, although today is one of our 10 grab-and-go locations. The grab-and-go locations were established at the locations where seniors live in our senior high-rises, senior apartment complexes, and for that, we worked with our food vendor, and we're able to literally bring frozen meals to our seniors, and then we're delivering 14 frozen meals to our seniors every other week, so we make sure that they continue to receive the nutritional meal that they would've if they were still attending one of our congregate dining centers.
The meals are wonderful. To me, they're restaurant quality. There's a wonderful variety. It's quite enjoyable. We're used to coming downstairs, having lunch every day. Most of us have given up our cars, so we don't have a car. We don't have the bus to take us to the store, but it would be worse if we had to put together meals ourselves with what we have. To know that the county is taking good care of us and bringing these frozen meals to us, this is very much appreciated. The county takes care of the seniors, and we are eternally grateful. We're very grateful.
With this pandemic that we are all experiencing, often seniors are forgotten population, so for our department to continue to stay connected to our seniors, it is crucial for their mental, spiritual, and emotional health, and also, we are providing a nutritional value. We're making sure that they are still receiving a nutritional meal, and the feedback that we continue to receive from our seniors is, "Thank you, thank you, thank you. You are saving me from self-isolation and just going into a state of depression."
Hillsborough County has issued a Safer At Home order to help prevent the further spread of COVID-19. This applies to all residents within Hillsborough County, including the cities of Plant City, Tampa, and Temple Terrace. The Safer At Home order means all residents are directed to stay home as much as possible, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. While the order is in place, you and your family can get groceries, medicine, or other essentials. You can go outdoors to get some fresh air, enjoy recreation, and walk your dog, but it's important to continue practicing social distancing and stay six feet apart from others. You can support local businesses by ordering delivery or takeout. To promote the safety and well-being of all people, public health experts recommend that all large gatherings, including religious services, be conducted online or through other communication technology whenever possible until the threat of the COVID-19 coronavirus has passed. Religious services are considered an essential activity, but those attending in-person services are urged to provide at least six feet of space between others. While the Safer At Home order is in place, you cannot visit friends or family unless you are their care provider, or leave the house for nonessential trips or gathering groups larger than 10. We encourage you to visit hcflgov.net/staysafe for up-to-date information. Hillsborough County has issued a Safer At Home order to help prevent the further spread of COVID-19. This applies to all residents and businesses within Hillsborough County, including the cities of Plant City, Tampa, and Temple Terrace. Essential businesses that have been identified by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security are allowed to stay open, some of which include grocery stores, restaurant delivery and drive-throughs, airlines, taxis, and other private transportation providers and gas stations. These businesses are required to have employees telecommute if possible, but may continue to do essential work that cannot be performed at home. They are required to provide employment opportunities to those who lost jobs because of COVID-19. Nonessential businesses can stay open if employees can work from home, and they will be able to provide delivery services. Nonessential businesses must close if unable to meet the required guidelines. We encourage you to visit hcflgov.net/staysafe for up-to-date information. Hillsborough County has teamed up with the Department of Health and other public health and safety agencies to address any impacts the virus may have on our local community. To help prevent the spread of the coronavirus, here are a few tips you should know. Practice proper hand washing by using soap and water, and wash for at least 20 seconds. Use alcohol-based hand sanitizer if you cannot wash. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. Cough and sneeze into a tissue and throw it away. Clean high-touch surfaces frequently. Some examples include doorknobs, credit and debit cards, cell phones, keyboard and mouse devices, and toilet handles. Stay home if you're feeling ill. If you have any flu-like symptoms, avoid contact with the public. Avoid sharing personal items in spaces with those close to you. Seek medical care early if you're feeling sick. Symptoms of the coronavirus can include fever, coughing, and shortness of breath. Seek medical care if you develop these symptoms, or if you've been traveling or have been in close contact with a person who has traveled from an area with an ongoing spread of COVID-19. We encourage you to visit hcflgov.net/staysafe for up-to-date information and tips.
A lot of things have been canceled, a lot of things have been postponed, but definitely not kindness, and we want to spread the kindness in our community and know that our first responders are still here for you, and thank you for staying at home for us, and we are here for you. So today, we are here to surprise a little boy who is turning nine. He just moved to the county with his family, and he's very quiet, very shy, but has an affinity for fire trucks. And so what better way to welcome him to Hillsborough County and also maybe celebrate a little bit of his birthday by bringing one of our very own fire engines and a rescue to do a little drive-by, especially during this time.
Wait, isn't someone having a birthday here? Is someone having a birthday here?
How's it going?
Good day.
Good day, babe. Isn't that cool?
Hillsborough County leaders and local health experts want to get a clearer picture on how many residents may currently have the COVID-19 coronavirus. To help those efforts, testing criteria has been expanded. Now, any resident wishing to be tested for COVID-19 can call 813-272-5900, weekdays between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to request an appointment. You do not need to be experiencing COVID-19 symptoms to receive a test, but the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has added six new symptoms to its existing list. COVID-19 symptoms include fever, cough, shortness of breath, chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain, headache, sore throat, and new loss of taste or smell. If you develop any emergency warning signs for COVID-19, such as trouble breathing, persistent pain or pressure in the chest, new confusion, or inability to get up after sleeping, or bluish lips or face, you should seek medical attention immediately. Call 911 if you have a medical emergency. Notify the operator that you have or think you might have COVID-19. If possible, put on a cloth face covering before medical help arrives. We encourage you to visit hcflgov.net/staysafe for up-to-date information.
If the COVID-19 coronavirus affects one of us, it affects all of us.
It does not discriminate based on race or ethnicity.
We are in this together, and when we work together, we are stronger as a community. Each person that has accurate and timely information about COVID-19 not only helps him or herself, but it's helping the entire county.
That's why Hillsborough County needs your input in the anonymous Stay Safe Survey. Your feedback will help Hillsborough County provide you and your loved ones with necessary information and resources to get through this COVID-19 pandemic together.
It takes just a few minutes. I've taken the survey, and now I challenge you to be a community player. Text STAY SAFE to 73224, or visit hcflgov.net/staysafeinput to take the survey.
So due to our closures of all of our congregate dining centers and senior centers because of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have 26 different locations that we're still providing meal services for, although today is one of our 10 grab-and-go locations. The grab-and-go locations were established at the locations-
For those of you that are looking at an image of me, I have an American flag here behind me. And for those of you that might be viewing this in a platform where you have the agenda in front of you, there should be a link to an image of an American flag in that link. So at this time, if you're able to, I would ask that you please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag.
...to the states of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask that you now join me in an invocation. Heavenly Father, I continue to pray for those who have been impacted by COVID-19, whether it be those that have physically become infected and have been ill with the virus, for those who may have lost family, friends, or loved ones, for those who might be in great need right now and perhaps be without employment or income. Lord, I continue to pray for those first responders and healthcare professionals that are each out there each and every day on the front line, many of them literally doing double time in an effort to combat this pandemic. Father, as always, I pray for members of our forces. They continue to do good work on behalf of this country each and every day, even in the midst of this pandemic. So I ask for blessings upon them. I give thanks for them. I ask for all these blessings and give all these thanks in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White, for that prayer. We truly appreciate it. We definitely needed it this time in our lives. Today, the Board continues to strive toward a level enormously during the pandemic. We were presenting three proclamations to groups who have given so much to our community, and the three just happened to be mine, so bear with me. This is the first time we're presenting these recognitions virtually. The good news is the recipients are on the phone conference call to accept these proclamations, and the first one will be presented today is Delta Day in Hillsborough County. Is Ms. Audrey Moore on the phone for Delta Sigma Theta?
Yes, I am. Commissioner Miller, how are you this morning?
I'm fine, ma'am. How are you?
Good.
Before I begin with this proclamation, I first want to take a moment to acknowledge the following members who are on the line, hopefully on the line today, for their hard work and dedication to Delta Sigma Theta and their community. The Tampa Alumni Chapter, Ms. Hetty Sumter, and the Tampa Alumni Chapter's second vice president, Ms. Sabrina Griffith. Are you on the phone?
This is Sabrina Griffith. I am on the phone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Tampa Metropolitan Chapter President, Ms. Charnell Williams. Okay. Ta' Aota, University of Tampa President, Ms. Michelle Moody.
Good morning. I am.
Good morning. Good morning. And Ms. Kayla Purdue, from the Kappa Aota, from the University of South Florida. You hear what I said? The University of South Florida.
Yes, I'm here. Good morning.
Okay. Let me thank all of you from Delta Sigma Theta who are watching from home for your service to this community, to this state, to this country, and to this world. Every year, the Board presents a proclamation to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated honoring its steadfast efforts and service to the community, which has become all more important than today. I presented this particular recognition for you many years now, and this is my last time doing this because I'm term limited out in November, so someone else will take this responsibility next year. Usually, dozens of Delta Sigma Theta members attend the ceremony dressed in all red. It's a wonderful sight to see, and usually, Commissioner Meriman has her red on, and I think she does have it on today because she wants to be an honorary member of Delta Sigma Theta. For their efforts today, proclamation, which I'll read until we recognize as May 6th as Delta Day, and it reads, "Whereas, Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, a private, not-for-profit organization, is a sisterhood of predominantly Black, college-educated women, whose purpose is to provide assistance and support through established programs in local communities throughout the world. Since its founding in 1913, more than 300,000 women have joined the organization. And whereas, Delta Sigma Theta's principal purposes are to engage in culture, educational, and service activities, and to establish, maintain, and encourage cultural, intellectual, moral standards. As a service organization, Delta creates initiatives to support organizations aimed at maximizing political awareness and involvement, international awareness and involvement, as well as physical and mental health through education and advocacy to empower communities. And whereas, engaging in social action is an integral part of the sorority's mission in addressing each component of the sorority's five-point programmatic thrust that began by participating in the Women's Suffrage March in 1913, and being granted status as a non-governmental organization member of the United Nations in 2003. And whereas, two alumni chapters, Tampa Alumni and Tampa Metropolitan Alumni, along with two collegiate chapters, Kappa Aota at the University of South Florida, and Ta' Aota at the University of Tampa, provide community services and support to the residents of Hillsborough County. They use their efforts to serve as a vehicle of advocacy that affects social change and public policy, supporting equality, I'm sorry, supporting quality education and granting scholarships to high school seniors, producing new projects to stimulate current and future economic growth, and improving the holistic well-being of minority populations locally, nationally, and globally. And whereas, some notable members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority are Dr. Paulette C. Walker, who's from Tampa, who served as a national president, former state senator, Arthenia L. Jordan, the former Democratic leader, Honorable Charlene Edwards-Honeywell, United States District Judge, Middle District of Florida, Florida's Second District Court of Appeals Judge Barbara Crenshaw, and Doretha W. Edgecombe, former Hillsborough County School Board member. Whereas, with the 2020 national theme of power in our voices, continuing our legacy, strengthening our democracy, the Social Action and Political Awareness and Involvement Committees of the Tampa Chapters are convening the 14th Annual Delta Day at the County Commission as a component of the sorority's National May Week Celebration. Now therefore, we proclaim that the Board of County Commissions of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 6th, 2020, as the 14th Annual Delta Day in Hillsborough County, and commend the Tampa Chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated on their years of continued exemplary service, Hillsborough County and its citizens. As soon as the 6th Day of May 2020, signed by all seven members of the County Commission. I wish we could get together so I could hand it to you, but unfortunately, we can't. So Ms. Moore, would you like to say a few words?
So Commissioner Miller, I would like to represent the organization. This is Sabrina Griffith from the Tampa Alumni Chapter, if that is okay.
That's fine.
From the Tampa Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and our sister chapters of Tampa Bay Region, Kappa Aota of the University of South Florida, Ta' Aota of the University of Tampa, and Tampa Metropolitan Alumni Chapter, I would like to thank the Hillsborough County Commission for this proclamation and recognition of our work and dedication to the Hillsborough County community for over the past 70 years. As an organization committed to public service with a primary focus on the African-American community, we appreciate the partnerships we have within our community and the opportunities we have to continue to dedicate our time and our resources to our neighbors in the coming years. Also, our president of Tampa Metropolitan, Charnell Williams, has asked that I share on behalf of their chapter, she would like to thank the County Commission for the proclamation. Also, she shares, as part of the organization's five-point programmatic thrust, service is one of our staples that we use to cultivate partnerships and build relationships in the broader Tampa Bay community. Recognizing the needs and providing service is what we do. We thank you so much for your time today and the opportunity to receive this proclamation virtually. Thank you very much for all that you're doing for our community.
Ms. Griffith, thank you very much for those comments, and thank the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated for all that you do, again, for this community, for this county, this state, this country, and this world. We do appreciate it. You all take care and stay safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the next proclamation declaring May 2020 as Community Action Month in Hillsborough County. I know Ms. Audrey Ziegler is with us. Ms. Ziegler? Are you there? Ms. Ziegler? Okay. Thought she was there when I saw her.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is William Thomas Jr. with the Community Action Board. If-
Pardon me?
If you'd like. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
This is William Thomas Jr., representing the CAU, Community Action Board, for the city of Plant City.
Okay.
I can chime in if you'd like, Sir Chair.
Yeah, we can do that. I thought Ms. Ziegler was going to be on, but that's okay. We'll move on with the, with this proclamation. Before we get started, let me, let me say this. As you all know, this pandemic has hit everyone very, very hard. People have lost their jobs, hurt badly. Hillsborough County was fortunate enough to have a $17 million social service program that we could put out there to help citizens of Hillsborough County. And Ms. Ziegler and her staff, along with other volunteers, put together a program in two weeks to help people of this county. And I said, two weeks to put this together. Phone lines, all the people working, the whole works. There were some problems. The phone lines crashed because there's 65,000 people to call in and try to get services from us, and we were able to, right now, they're processing close to 5,000 applications. So I just had to put that out there because Ms. Ziegler and her staff worked very, 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 very hard. There were some criticisms, and as I tell people, unless you were around in 1918, you weren't, you didn't face a pandemic like this. So Ms. Ziegler, I don't know if you're on the phone, on the line yet or not, but I want to personally thank you on behalf of this County Commission. Let me, let me move forward. The Community Action Agencies have done so much to care and support Hillsborough County's most vulnerable individuals and families. Community Action Month recognizes these agencies, most notably the Hillsborough County Community Action Board, whose steadfast dedication and hard work has helped improve quality of life for the residents. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, Community Action Agencies have been fighting poverty since 1964, when they were created as part of the United States Economic Opportunity Act. And whereas, Community Action Agencies put a human face on poverty and help citizens with, that are low-income, become self-sufficient, uplift neighborhoods, and ensure all people are able to live with dignity. And whereas, the agencies are working with the state of Florida to help guide reform of welfare system, a partnership that enhances both entities and benefits Hillsborough County residents. And whereas, Community Action Agencies contribute to Hillsborough County's most vulnerable citizens and families by providing cost-effective programs that have a profound impact on people's lives. And whereas, Hillsborough County Community Action Agencies Board recommendations guide the development, implementation, and evaluation of community service block grant funds and programs that serve residents and communities in need. And whereas, in support of the Community Action Board, Hillsborough County promotes economic prosperity by providing opportunities for residents in need. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissions of Hillsborough County, Florida, as he was by declare May 2020 as Community Action Month in Hillsborough County, and urging all residents to recognize the Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County Community Action Board's efforts to improve quality of life and enhance economic opportunities for all the region's most vulnerable residents. Execute the sixth day of May 2020 and sign by all seven members of the County Commissioners." I don't know if Ms. Ziegler was back on the phone, but Ms. Thomas, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, Chairman Miller, I appreciate the, the support of the Hillsborough County Commission on behalf of the Community Action Board. And again, I'd like to dittle your comments, Chair, on Ms. Ziegler and the staff and the work that they put in, not only in serving the community and the county, but also making sure they engage stakeholders such as myself, currently in my position role as Secretary on the CAU. Again, I can't say enough about the support that we have with the county and with Ms. Ziegler and her staff regarding engaging those who care about the community. So on behalf of all of us, the Community Action Board, in light of the pandemic, I again appreciate your comments, Mr. Chair, on that. We appreciate the acknowledgement, and hopefully we'll be able to move things forward.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Take care of yourself.
Yes. Hello, Commissioner Miller. This is Sharon Gordon with Hillsborough County Social Services. Audrey Ziegler, she is on the line. She's having some, the issues with the audio, so, but thank you very much.
Okay, you're quite welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next presentation is declaring, there she is, declaring May 6, 2020 as Tampa Bay Tourism Day in Hillsborough County. Is Mr. Santiago Carrata on?
Yes, good morning, Ms. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Carrata. Ms. Carrata is President of, and President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, who, right now, as we all.
Good morning.
Good morning. Who's that? Okay. Hillsborough County has so much to offer to our residents and visitors. Tourism has been affected during the pandemic. Our community will preserve and overcome the challenges it faces sooner or later. Hillsborough County will continue to be one of the greatest tourism capitals of the world. This proclamation was recognized today as Tampa Bay Tourism Day as an illustration of our county's expanding as a good place to live, work, and play. And the proclamation reads, "Whereas, a unique blend of culture, history, attractions, and events make Hillsborough County the state of Florida one of the most dynamic destinations for travelers from across the country and around the world. And whereas, last year, 23 million visitors, 23 million visitors discovered the treasure that awaits when they come to Hillsborough County. And whereas, in 2019, tourism was a source of livelihoods for nearly 54,000 local residents and has become the fastest-growing component of economic development of Hillsborough County."
Welcome to WebX. Enter your access code or meeting number.
Whereas, tourism contributes, contributes nearly 6.5 billion, with a B, to Hillsborough dollars, to Hillsborough County economy in the form of wages, accommodations, food, and beverage spending, property taxes, and more. And whereas, unprecedented tourist development tax collections has raised Hillsborough County into the ranks of Florida's highest-impact tourism counties. And whereas, tourism continues to help build Hillsborough County's reputation as a great place to live, work, and play, and invest. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissions of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 6, 2020 as Tampa Bay Tourism Day in Hillsborough County, and urges all residents to support the efforts of Visit Tampa Bay, the county's tourism promotion agency, to invite visitors to enjoy the unique features of Hillsborough County, the urban heart of Florida's Gulf Coast. Execute the sixth day, 2020, and sign by all seven members of the County Commission. Mr. Santiago, would you like to say a few words, please, sir?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your amazing leadership and your steadfast advocacy for our industry. Good morning, Honorable Commissioners, Mr. County Administrator, esteemed county staff, and those listening in. As much as the technology is fantastic, and I want to thank Mr. James Brewer with county staff for not only preparing us yesterday, but again this morning for the use of it. I think most of you know, I would rather be seeing you at our annual National Tourism Week luncheon and receiving the proclamation there. This proclamation always means so much to us, but I think this year, it really takes on added significance. Because of the current situation we find ourselves in, I think people around the globe now realize the incredible power of the spirit of travel and the huge economic significance of our hospitality industry. You know what they say, sometimes you don't value something until it's gone. And I think most of all, individuals now understand that to be human means to explore and to connect with other cultures, people, and places. You know, I'm here today to reaffirm our commitment that when the time is right, Visit Tampa Bay will continue to drive a record number of visitors to our home, to our destination, so they can unlock the many incredible treasures of Hillsborough County. So thank you so much, Honorable Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, for all that you do to support us in what we do. It's really a pleasure to promote and sell our destination around the world. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Carrata. We appreciate it very, very much. And I know it's tough times right now, but hopefully, we all will bounce back and you can continue to do the work that you're doing. So thank you so very much. And I want to thank all the recipients for joining us today, and I want to thank everyone that's listening for your support as we go through this pandemic. Thank you very much. Mr. Brewer, were we able to get Commissioner Murman back on?
I am here. Thank you.
Very good. Glad to hear you.
Chairman, I would also like to do a quick tech test with Audrey Ziegler. It looked like she had joined and said good morning. Audrey, are you there? Never mind. Carry on, Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Merle, change this to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have, we have two off-the-agenda items, F3, which is a request from Commissioner Kemp to receive a report from Social Services updating the board about the county's Rapid Response Recovery Assistance Program. The second off-the-agenda item is B8, which is being set for a 10:45 time certain, and that's to approve budget amendment to appropriate the $256.8 million the county received from the federal government as part of the CARES Act. We have then only one item that has been removed from consent for discussion by Commissioner Smith, and that's A71, and that was to set a public hearing on June 17th to receive comment on adopting a rate resolution set water, resources, fees, and charges. We have three time certens today, beginning at 10:00 AM. We have a public hearing, D1, and that's a public hearing to consider changes to the ordinance, county ordinances to allow for a change in the ability to irrigate new and existing lawns. At 10:30, we have item G1, which is to receive a report regarding the status recruitment for a new county administrator. And at 10:45 is B8, the item I mentioned before, which is the budget amendment for the CARES Act funding that the county received. And those are the changes to the agenda.
Move the changes. Change this.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Murman, to approve the changes to the agenda. I don't see any hands for any discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Again?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment, and there's quite a bit to read now since we're doing this virtually, so bear with me. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it's requested at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW.HillsboroughCounty.org backslash EN backslash government backslash meeting dash information backslash speak at a virtual meeting. You'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Prior authorization is on first come, first served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to the participants that will have complete, who have completed the form after it is received from the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being requested by the Chair of the, by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly. The first person we have is Kevin O'Neill.
Yes. Hello, everybody. Kevin O'Neill from the Libertarian Party, Hillsborough County, speaking on Agenda Item F2, Frank 2, and the off-agenda item that just got added, B8, Beta 8. So I'm calling, I'm speaking on behalf of business owners in the county. We have approximately 42,000 of them. And you guys here at the County Commission do have control over millage, and the topic I want to discuss is, we need to prorate our 42,000 business owners back, a portion of the millage which comes through as a tangible personal property tax, TPP. I'm sure you're all familiar with this. We obviously have had this shutdown, a government-ordered quarantining of the entire population at some level or another. Obviously, there are not 40 people in cages, but we're impacting their ability to move about and conduct business. This has absolutely fallen on the heads of business owners in our county. We need to make good for them. We need to remedy this through a prorated discount back of their TPP tax. Because we need to, there's a lot of ways we can do this. You guys have control over a big chunk of the millage, as you know, and because this event already took place in the past, we do have the remaining of the tax year to go for you guys to do a simple motion that says something to the effect on day, you know, 180 this year, we're going to be reducing the TPP millage rate for business owners from X to Y, and on day 270, we're going to bump it back up from Y to X, effectively netting back to them all those taxes for their property that was inaccessible to them before the year end, and most importantly, before the tax bill goes out. We absolutely can't have our business owners having to go through an appeals process and get their appraised values reassessed. We need to prevent them from having to go through that administrative process and go straight to our tax collector, in my opinion, with your ordinance passed to make good for them. I'm happy to see that this CARES Act, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Safety Act, has produced a quarter billion dollars for the county, and that 85, up to $85 million of business recovery dollars, literally approved the plan for use of the business recovery dollars there on Agenda Item B8, has been listed on our agenda today, and that is exactly, pretty much lines up. If you do the prorated counts for the past nine weeks, approximately the same number of dollars that we are talking about, needing to prevent from being taxed on existing business owners. I'll be happy to make myself available to any of you guys who want to take the lead, any of you Commissioners who want to take the lead on this. I've got all the spreadsheets worked out, and I'm sure we can write the motion. So I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Listening, and I thank you for your time.
The time is up. Thank you very much. Noelle Lecore?
Good morning. My name is Noelle Lecore, and I've called in today to ask the BOCC to please support Agenda Item F1, which would allow citizens in unincorporated Hillsborough County to legally keep backyard chickens. With the current pandemic, we have seen just how important self-reliance is. Chicken eggs are one of the first foods that quickly disappeared off grocery store shelves. Many people I know could not find eggs for up to three weeks, and when they finally did find them, there was a one package limit per family, no matter how large of the family. If allowing backyard chickens moves forward, there's a few things that can be done to help ensure success, such as a permit requirement with a small fee and/or a chicken education cost. Hillsborough County should look at what other backyard chicken ordinances around the state look like, including what has worked and what has not. There's plenty of other municipalities that allow chickens, including the city of Tampa, which is ironic. In Hillsborough County, you can legally have chickens in the city, but not in unincorporated parts unless it's due for ag. Please support Agenda Item F1, and doing so, you will help Hillsborough County residents to have a reliable food supply in their own backyards. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Heather Drobridge?
Hi, I'm Heather Drobridge, and I'm also speaking about the Agenda Item F1 as it pertains to the chickens. I'm here to encourage that we complete the necessary steps to allow the backyard chickens in all of Hillsborough County. I understand that this is not the first time that this conversation has been had. I found some posts online that indicate that the process was started and then dropped for some reason as recent as 2017. And I wasn't here in 2017, so I don't have any knowledge of the situation, but what I do know is that this is important to county residents, and this is something that we need to see happen now. As was just stated, the city of Tampa has made it happen, so I know that the county can as well. And I'd like to kind of remind people of why we're pushing for this and why it's important to our county residents. So residents are not seeking to be commercial chicken farmers. We're seeking to provide a local, sustainable food source for our families that's available even in times like the COVID-19 pandemic, when we have food shortages and purchase limitations. Those raising backyard chickens have a safe, secure, and humane source for food. But chickens do more than provide eggs. They eat a variety of weeds and disease-carrying insects, making the backyard and water supply safer without the use of toxic chemicals, and they do so while meticulously preening themselves to maintain good hygiene. One of the misconceptions about chickens is that they smell, but they actually don't. Their waste does smell, just like any animal waste does, but they only produce about a twelfth of what an average dog produces, and the waste can be used as fertilizer. One of the misconceptions about chickens is that they smell, but they actually don't. Their waste does smell, just like any animal waste does, but they only produce about a twelfth of what an average dog produces, and the waste can be used as fertilizer. There's also a misconception that chickens are noisy when they're actually not. There have been cases of family flocks being kept for years without the next neighbor knowing about it. Hens, at their loudest, they have the same decibel level as human conversation, which is 60 to 70 decibels, much lower than a dog's bark of 80 to 90 decibels. And intermittent daytime noises are a normal part of living in a community, and regulations should not discriminate against any species. Regarding space to keep chickens, there's simply no need or justification for limiting the number of hens or lot size required to keep hens. Chickens require very little space to be well-capped. The number of family could responsibly raise in a backyard is much more than most families would wish to keep. And there are many county residents that are illegally keeping chickens, and then they have to rehome these animals when they're reported, usually by a neighbor that is doing so out of sight. And this is unnecessary and creating an issue in locating homes for these animals that really have no need to be home. They're not hurting anyone or anything, quite the opposite, actually. And so I'm just asking that we, that we change the code and that we allow backyard chickens in all of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bart, Bart Cape.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bart Cape. Good morning, commissioners and administrators and community members. I also want to support agenda item F1, asking for consideration for families in other parts of Hillsborough County to have the opportunity to appropriately raise and maintain backyard chickens for food source, sustainability, and educational opportunities. In addition to the things that were just mentioned, our family has several significant dietary allergies as well. Clean eggs can be particularly very difficult to find, especially in the times such as the pandemic we're in the midst of now. We certainly would be able to largely control the chicken diet and outside influences to assure they would be safe from any allergens for our family. As previously mentioned, also, the lot sizes in many areas of the county seem to meet most other area land requirements. And we also believe there are great educational opportunities for our family in raising and maintaining the chickens as well. You guys' considerations greatly appreciated in the effort to allow county residents to appropriately maintain and raise chickens in areas that have appropriate space. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be a part of this great community.
Thank you. Michael Parrott? Michael Parrott? Katie Parrott? Katie Parrott?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good morning. My name is Katie Parrott. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and be able to voice my stance on issue F1 for backyard chickens in unincorporated Hillsborough County. I'm in favor of and requesting the board vote and permit for backyard chickens throughout all of the unincorporated Hillsborough County area. I am advocating for the adaptation of the current Plant City and Tampa ordinances. Backyard chickens will give local residents an opportunity to practice sustainable living, invest in the local economy by purchasing local chicks, feed and coop supplies, as well as participate in a permitted ordinance already in place in the two large cities of Tampa and Plant City on either side of the unincorporated area. Currently, any agriculturally zoned area is already permitted to have chickens, so the adaptation for residential areas would not cause hardship or stress, as chickens already dot the landscape depending on the zoning, the resident zoning. As a parent of school-aged children, I would appreciate the opportunity that keeping chickens would allow my children by being able to participate in groups like 4H. Lastly, I'm requesting that roosters be considered for permission. A rooster gives a flock sustainability. It provides for quieter and happier hens in a flock, as well as fewer fights to define a pecking order. A rooster makes no additional noises beyond what is already taking place in the area, for example, train horns in the night, a neighbor's loud music being played, children playing an outside sport, or dogs barking. By permitting a rooster in a flock, it will also stop the rooster dumping that is anticipated when an owner doesn't want to butcher or rehome the rooster because it is prohibited. In conclusion, I ask that you vote favorably today for all of unincorporated Hillsborough County to be permitted for backyard chickens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. James Davidson?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you for, good morning, commissioners. Thank you for continuing the public comment in your board meetings. With all the things going on, I regret to bring this up because you have other things that take up your time, but I thought it was important, and I'd like to read something to you. Key messages. Key messages aren't meant to be memorized and repeated word for word, but should be used as guidelines to be included and written and spoken communication. They shape what you want the public to think and do. This is contained in the Independent Oversight Committee's new media plan, which was unveiled last week and is on currently online. If you have not read it, I advise you to do so. The plan was put forth, was put together by the NPO staff ostensibly to perform their and their committee's mandate as they see it, to not only oversee and audit the spending of the surtax, but also to oversee the implementation of the projects identified in each agency's project plan, including the BOCCs. Their media plan is quite comprehensive and is more complete than most local political campaigns, the biggest difference being that it is paid for by the taxpayers of Hillsborough County through the BOCC ordinance. Although it talks about shaping people's thoughts and actions, there is nothing about the accuracy of what they say, the truth, or honesty. I have read the ordinance and the charter amendment, Judge Barbas's final order, and can find nothing that mandates all the stated purposes as put forth by the NPO or that requires the BOCC to fund such a media plan. Just think of it. We have people in local government who are supposed to serve the people of this county feel it is their purpose to attempt to control the thinking and actions of the people in this county to their own vision, not with facts or with the truth, but with messaging. I always thought it was supposed to be the other way around. If this behavior does not shock you, I have two questions. If the All For Transportation sales tax and the NPO's long-range transportation plan were so, so well put together, so accurate, so truthful, so complete, that they would be able to deliver on the promises made of reducing congestion, better safety, getting home in time for dinner, sustainable growth, and cleaner air, then why is it necessary to continue messaging? Should the results speak for themselves? I think you need to bring the director of the NPO and the chairman of the IOC into the chambers here so that we can decide exactly what the purpose is, so we can all be on the same page. You're paying for it. The taxpayers of this county are paying for it. Thank you very much for your time.
The time is up. Thank you. Chris Bowles? Chris Bowles? Chris Bowles? That completes our public comment section. I have a motion to approve this, approve this agenda.
Commissioner Merman? Second.
Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have a little bit of time before your 10:00 a.m. public hearing, and so we'll take some of the regular agenda items first, beginning with item B1, geospatial land acquisition.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Hey, good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Eric Sumner, geospatial and land acquisition first. He presented item B1, the purchase of 102 East Kennedy Boulevard located in downtown Tampa. This property was the last Patriot Park of Hillsborough County's master plan. So this is the current location of the Firestone property.
Excuse me, sir. Hold on, hold on, sir, hold on a minute. We're getting some feedback, like echo sounds. Mr. Brew, is that?
That is coming from Mr. Sumner. Sumner, can you locate closer to the device? It seems like we're picking up some of the reverb in the room.
Is it, are you on speaker? If you're on speaker, get off the speaker and just...
Talk into the computer.
Okay, can, is this on?
No, sir. That's, you got a problem there.
Eric, I can send you an email with the call-in information. It's also in the join invite that I sent. It might be able to fix this issue if you just call in directly.
No.
No, sir.
Okay, why don't, why don't you just...
Let me take this item, then, Mr. Chair. I mean, if there's any questions, we can get Eric back on the phone. But essentially, as I described to all of you in the briefing, this is a request to approve the purchase of the property known as the Firestone property, which is located right on County right across from the, the Hillsborough County School District offices. It is the last parcel that we have to acquire in order to assemble the area to do the court's master plan. And so Eric and his folks have been working on this for some time. We have before you the real estate sales contract based on an appraised fair market value, and this then will enable us to bring back to you later, probably in the summer, an RFP to begin the discussion about the course master plan. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, we recommend your approval.
Move the item. Commissioner Merman?
We have a motion by, I have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White. I don't see any hands. Hold on. I don't see any hands for any questions. Therefore, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Good morning.
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, the next item would be B2, a management and budget item. Kevin Bricky, are you there?
Yes, I am, sir. Kevin Bricky with Management and Budget. Item B2, commissioners, is asking you to approve by supermajority vote a FY20 budget amendment to transfer $5 million from the catastrophic disaster recovery fund reserves and appropriate to the future disaster events fund, which is the fund that we're continuing to fund direct costs related to the COVID-19 health emergency, and also to realign $2 million currently within the fund from personnel services and capital outlay to operating expenditures. Again, these are for expenditures that are directly related to responding to the COVID event, and we anticipate that approximately 87 and a half percent of these types of expenses, incremental expenses, will be eventually reimbursed by FEMA and the state of Florida. Thank you.
Move the approval. Commissioner Merman?
Commissioner Merman, just second.
Commissioner Overman seconds it.
Okay, Commissioner Overman seconds the motion. I don't see any, any hands for any questions. Therefore, please call the roll with the supermajority vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
We have three social services items, B3, B4, and B5. And so Audrey, are you there?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize for this morning. I actually came to County Center to avoid technical difficulties and ended up with one when I plugged into my docking station. So thank you for your patience with me. Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. For item B3, the department is requesting for the board to approve to accept $1,845,308 in federal grant funds from the state of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the Community Services Block Grant for the period of April 1, 2020, ending March 31, 2021. On February 28, 2020, Social Services received a notice of award for funding for that same period with notice that a modification to the existing contract would be forthcoming. Due to the delay in receipt of the modification because of COVID-19 and the need to continue providing services, Social Services will submit an additional agenda item, which will be your next one, B4, because of the timing, we ended up getting them on here together, when the contract modification is received. The grant will be used to assist low-income residents working towards self-sufficiency through family empowerment programs, education empowerment, youth empowerment, and partnership agreements within the community, also allowing for crisis services. We're also asking to approve a budget amendment to appropriate in funding to the Social Services CSBG budget to bring the budget in line with the actual grant award of $1,845,308 for the FY20 grant year.
Move approval. Commissioner Merman?
I have a motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second.
I see no hands at this time, so therefore, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
B4?
Social Services is requesting item B4 to accept and execute for the Social Services Department, modification number four, to the Community Services Block Grant with the state of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, increasing the current agreement by $1,845,308 in funding for the April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2021 grant period. The grant will be used to assist low-income residents working towards self-sufficiency through the programs that I mentioned in item B3. Crisis services will also address wage loss for low-income households for their burden due to COVID-19.
Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, who approved, who made the motion?
Commissioner Kemp.
Commissioner Kemp made the motion. Commissioner Merman seconds it. Mrs. Ziegler, I'm sorry, I thought you were done, but we got motions to carry forth. I don't see the hands at this particular point in time, so therefore, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith? Mr. Smith? White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Brew. Just checking to see if something happened with Commissioner Smith. I, um...
Yes, sir. She did drop out of the session.
Sorry, I'm back. I'm back.
You're back? Okay, she's back. All right, thank you. B5?
Item B5 requests the board to approve to accept $4,405,491 in federal grant funds from the state of Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program for the period of April 1, 2020, ending March 31, 2021. In March of 2020, Social Services received a notice of award for funding for that same period with notice that a modification to the existing contract would be forthcoming due to the delay in receipt of that modification because of contract. Due to the delay, the Social Services Department, it will submit a following agenda item to have the agreement modification voted on at that time. The grant will be utilized to fund direct customer energy assistance payments for low-income eligible households in Hillsborough County. This modification will provide funding for over 12,000 units of service during that year. We also request that the board approve the social services law heat budget to bring the budget in line with the actual grant award amount mentioned. award amount mentioned before for the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Grant Program for the period of April 1 through March 31, 2021.
Move approval.
Second.
Uh, seeing no hands, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Uh, item B6, which is Water Resources, George or Beth?
Good morning, Tim and Miller. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
This is Beth, good morning. This is Beth Shinella with the Water Resources Department. Item B6 recommends the approval and execution of Amendment 1 to the contract with TNG Utility for the Water Resources Department Customer Billing System Upgrade. The amendment increases the total contract amount by $1,560,361 from $2,162,500 to $3,722,861. This amendment will enhance the services and provide support to staff for the department's billing system upgrade into the cloud and extend the contract expiration date to the end of January 2021.
Move approval, Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner Kemp.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B6. I don't see any hands, so therefore, please call the roll for approval.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think the rest of the regular items may, uh, take a little bit of time. We have, uh, about two minutes before your 10:00 AM public hearing. Uh, do you want to, um, uh, just pause for a couple of minutes?
Yeah, let's just, let's, let's halt off about two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, my clock shows 10:00 AM. Uh, we can proceed with, uh, public hearing D1.
Commissioners, this is Hank Ennis with the County Attorney's Office. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Commissioners, this is an ordinance amendment to your water conservation ordinance. As you know, the water pressure is becoming increasingly low in the South County Water and Wastewater Service area. Water Resources would like to reduce the hours of irrigation to avoid peak usage times. Currently, uh, people are allowed to water between 6:00 PM and 8:00 AM. It's a 14-hour window. Uh, th- this ordinance will reduce the irrigation window by 4.5 hours and allow irrigation between 8:30 AM to 12:00 noon and 6 o'clock PM to 12:00 midnight. This eliminates the 12 o'clock midnight to 8:30 AM peak usage times. In addition, uh, we are asking that you ratify our variance requests that we submitted to SWIFTMUD to allow watering up to 12:00 noon. SWIFTMUD only allows irrigation up to 10:00 AM normally. The Water Resources wants to stretch out that time to avoid the peak usage times again. Water Resources staff submitted the variance request to SWIFTMUD to expedite the approval process, and SWIFTMUD has already granted this variance. These restrictions expire June 14th to coincide with the rainy season. And Commissioner, this is a public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. I didn't get any notification of anyone who wanted to speak on this, uh, public hearing item. Uh, Mr. McElroy, was anyone?
Uh, Commissioner Miller, no, there are no speakers to this public hearing.
Okay. All right, then we're going to move into questions. Commissioner Smith, you recognize? Commissioner Smith?
Got it. Red is dead. Okay, thank you. Um, the water, I'm going to support this item, of course, but the, I just want to comment that the, um, and make a suggestion. The water pressure problems in South County are very serious, and they can lead to boil water notices and low pressure at fire hydrants if they get too low. The normal pressure is 80 to 85 pounds per square inch, PSI. And we're dropping to 30 PSI at high demand times now. If it goes to 20 PSI, we have a health issue requiring boil water notices and a safety issue with fire hydrant pressure. Uh, Commissioner Merman may remember a certain constituent, uh, called Mariella Smith, um, who was calling her office and dealing with Della about several boil water notices we suffered in my neighborhood a few years ago when they were laying a new pipe. Um, it, boil water notices are a huge hassle, uh, to, to, uh, to look at. And meanwhile, um, SWIFTMUD has declared us to be in a Phase 1 water shortage. We can't today make major changes to the ordinance that is before us, and I certainly support that. Uh, it, it's already been noticed, but I just wanted to say, uh, we may find it prudent to come back later at another hearing to extend our county ordinance change for a longer time. With or without requesting any further variances from SWIFTMUD, we can still keep our morning and evening times somewhat reduced without asking for SWIFTMUD to let us extend our morning water, uh, watering time into noon like they just did this time. So, so that's an option. I wanted to point out to the board and to staff, and I'd like to suggest to staff that if we do need to come back to extend those, uh, these regulations, uh, that next time we make the ordinance for a longer timeframe, I think it's easier for people to figure out the rules, easier for us to communicate the rules when they're not changing for just a couple of months and then changing back. And we do need to conserve water, uh, for the, from the lawn watering, uh, usage in this part of county while we are trying to, uh, address those water pressure problems with new capacity. So, uh, finally, uh, this current ordinance applies to a huge area of South County, but only inside the urban service area. There are, as we know, several developments in RP2 and WVR2, large developments, over 1,000 houses each, that are getting hooked up to county water even though they are outside the urban service area. So in the future, whatever watering restrictions we put in place to conserve water in South County needs to include the WVR2 and RP2 communities that are using county water. They're part of the capacity, uh, problem, so they need to be part of the solution next time we do that. And, um, with that, I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, the second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, um, thank you, Commissioner Smith. I always enjoy getting your phone calls.
Yeah, right.
But anyway, um, when I read this item, of course, I'm very supportive. And, um, the people in South County, they often feel forgotten. So I think it's, this is a good move for us to let all the residents know that we're watching out over this. Um, and that we'll keep doing that. We're going to stay vigilant about the water condition, really, in South County. But I think that communication's going to be extremely important. So, um, I, I, uh, would like to ask staff, especially the Communications Department, to make sure that they get adequate information out to all the citizens and residents of South County to let them know what we're doing. Um, so they know that, again, they have the confidence in, uh, their commission that we're, we're watching out for them and their water needs. So, um, happy to support this. Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Merman, would you all put your hands down?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I see no other hands. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item D1. Uh, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Pagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Uh, yes, I did have a comment to make, and I had my hand up. I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioner Smith, for educating us on this. And I, it sounds like we do need, um, a stronger and more comprehensive measure in the future.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Um, it didn't come up for some reason, but we're in the middle of a vote right now.
Uh, okay, I did a yes. I just wanted to make sure that that was heard.
Okay, uh, continue the roll call.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Now, Commissioner Kemp, your hand just popped up on my screen. So whatever, this must be delayed somewhere, so you can now remove it. I apologize for that. I didn't see your hand. Okay. Mr. Merrill?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, some time until your 10:30 time certain. So we'll go back to the regular agenda to B7, which is a planning commission item. I believe Melissa Zornita is here for this item.
Yes, good, good morning, Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Wonderful. Uh, good morning. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all today. Um, the item that is, uh, in front of you is seeking direction on how we conclude the two projects that we've been working on related to the RP2 land use category and the Wyomama Village land use category, both of which are subject to the moratoriums, which are, uh, set to expire September 1st. Um, and as is outlined in the agenda item, we, uh, had some very successful outreach at the beginning of the projects, um, in person, great turnout at our public meetings with, um, uh, attendees, um, over 100 at some of the meetings. Um, but on, as we quickly adapted, given the public health crisis, to online engagement, we have not seen the same levels of engagement from the community in, um, as opposed to having over 100 at one meeting. Our online meeting, uh, in April had about 20 participants in, who took the survey and watched the videos that we produced. Um, as such, uh, we wanted to get your direction on how to conclude these studies. Um, the current, uh, timeline to get them, the plan amendments and land development code pieces adopted by the end of August, uh, puts us at a currently scheduled public hearing on those items on June 18th. In order to meet that date, we would be needing to have, um, our final open house with each of those communities in a virtual means right now, if it was to be held in May. Um, so the memo, um, uh, also outlines some of the other concerns that we have about the virtual, uh, meeting as a conclusion. Uh, we, we know that people are, have other priorities in their lives right now than land use studies. They're worried about their health, uh, their employment, uh, their, their children being homeschooled, things of that nature. Um, additionally, particularly in the Wyomama community, we have a number of residents who, it's documented, do not have access to computers and internet service. And so that's a big challenge for how, for them to participate. So the first option is to, for us to conclude in a virtual means and arrive at a public hearing with you all on June 18th. Uh, the other two options, and there may be others, but these are the, the other two that I thought of, um, were to potentially postpone that hearing to one of your public hearings in July. Um, they're, they're not designated on your calendar right now for plan amendment public hearings. Um, but that additional 30 days or so might allow us the opportunity to, in early June, have some form of in-person, uh, outreach. Again, there's a lot of questions with that as to where we would be able to hold that and, and exactly what that would look like. Um, but we're exploring a lot of alternatives of how we could do something that has a virtual piece as well as an in-person piece. And then the, the final option is for you all to consider whether or not you want to extend the moratoriums to give us additional time through the summer to have, uh, more options for in-person outreach. At this point, that's all I had to present, and I look forward to your feedback and, and direction.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree that because of these unforeseen circumstances that, uh, we need a slight extension, uh, to these moratoriums. Um, I do, um, think that, uh, we can make it work on the calendars, uh, as suggested by Ms. Zornita. So I would move to direct Ms. Zornita to work with the County Attorney's Office to bring a plan to extend the moratoriums back to the board.
Uh, there's a motion by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Uh, second, this is Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I, I need, I have a question for Ms. Beck as it pertains to bringing this back for a possible extension. Is Ms. Beck available?
Yes, I am.
She's, yeah, she's, go ahead.
Great. Can you confirm that whether the following statements are correct? The ordinances create these, the ordinance creating these moratoriums, moratoriums, speak in singular terms in regards to extensions, um, which giving attorneys the legal argument, no matter how valid, that we may only extend these moratoriums once. So, um, and if that's the case, is the maximum, uh, timeframe for an extension 270 days?
Um, Commissioner, that's something that I think we would look at and work with Ms. Zornita and, um, and consider that when bringing back, uh, a recommendation to the board about, um, an extension.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. It's not to say that we would use all of the 270 days, but, but we would work towards, obviously, we'd like to see that in less time. I'm only asking, um, or suggesting that the 270 days be considered for flexibility. Um, we do, I truly hope that that is not the case, and I'd like to see us get back. Um, where, but I, I'm concerned that we may find ourselves in a situation where we are unable to have our citizens really opine their concerns about our long-term planning, uh, goals and, and zoning. I believe Ms. Zornita is giving us the flexibility to complete her work within a timeframe that's essential. And we can do this, um, right and not hastily as citizens who live in this community have to live with the outcome of this planning for... of this planning for as long as they live in Hillsborough County. The comment made earlier about the lack of access to internet services in that area is very evident by Spectrum's map of hotspots. You know, Wyomama is very short in the way of getting access to internet. And given the drop in participation, we have evidence that it is difficult for citizens to give us guidance on how they want their community to grow and survive and thrive. So I will support the motion if, and if, given that we take into consideration that we would only have one time to extend that moratorium, and if we go too short, we may find ourselves up against a rock and a hard place. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I also agree with Commissioner Overman. We can always end the moratorium, but extensions are difficult, one way or the other, no matter what the findings of our ability to do so is. Extensions are difficult. It's difficult to drag everybody through another hearing for what's the time going to be this time. And I, so I think, I think it's clear to everyone who's been participating from all sides that our staff, our planning commission, our planners have, were working hard, our consultants working hard and quickly and perfectly able to get this done in the timeframe that was originally planned and everybody was originally counting on. The only thing that has messed things up is this pandemic. And I've heard from citizens in both the Baum and Wyomama area that the public participation has been difficult due to the stay-home orders, the distractions of other concerns, and the difficulty with virtual meetings and internet. And I'm just not sure that's all going to be up and running, and people are going to be back to community meetings and charrettes and talking among themselves in a way that really produces the best plan by June. You know, I'm just thinking that also, you know, this benefits, making sure that we have the process where everyone's at the table benefits everyone from all sides. Because, I mean, my own experience with the Ruskin Community Plan, other community plans bear this out. Once we get the rules in place that everyone agrees on, our zoning hearings are much more peaceful then. I mean, in my own community, I've had people call me up after our plan was done and say, oh, Noah, yellow signs have gone up, and there's a new zoning happening. And I'd look at it, and I'd say, fine, it complies with our plan, and we don't even have to show up. And we don't have to have those battles at the county commission. So my hope is we get the rules in place that everyone agrees on or everyone can at least live with, and it makes everything run smoother for the community as well as the builders and the development community. And so that's the point of, just to be clear, of extending the moratorium. And I think it's important to see if we can have the attorney bring us this to a public hearing where we have the option to have a long enough extension that would make sure we have time to get the actual community meetings done, but with pledges that as soon as we can, we'll be back to work in the very same order that we had started this process. And I think we have the confidence of everyone to let us have that leeway, knowing we're not going to use it for anything, but making sure we get a good product. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank you for the points that you raised, Commissioner Overman. That was a good one. Yeah, I can't imagine legally or any other way that it would be a good idea, even if we could, to keep just piecemealing it with an extension. Obviously, because of the pandemic, because of COVID-19, this would just be impossible to do in any way that it was originally conceived and in any way that would be reasonable for the community. I don't think we have really any choice but to extend this and probably with the option as long as possible so that we can, you know, once this is over or we're in a better posture, we can do this and look at this in a way that's a community way. I also learned that in Wyomama, 70% of those do not have internet access, which is kind of, I'm, it's good to learn and know that we have a community that's underserved, because perhaps we can deal with that in the future. But I think there is no other choice but this. And I appreciate Ms. Zornita bringing it forward and intend to support the motion.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank Melissa. She, we talked quite a bit about this the other day. And, you know, I understand where she's coming from and the crisis and how it's affected, you know, the timeframe. But honestly, to talk about extending a moratorium and going through this COVID crisis, I saw where lots of states and counties across our nation had to issue moratoriums because they were in crisis. We were not in crisis, and we issued a moratorium. And I just find that, you know, here we are talking about extending it. But I do understand the circumstances. But to extend it for another 270 days, I wasn't in favor of doing, I think we're using the word, again, and I'm going to stay consistent, we're using the word moratorium for another two words that actually say stop development. And I think we all need to be very clear about what we're trying to accomplish here. This moratorium actually costs jobs. I will tell you that all right now. So we need to get this process done quick. And I understand if we need another month or something like that, but to go full throttle, 270 more days, you're just going to take jobs away from people that really need them right now. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Commissioner Miller, I just forgot to take my hand down. I'll do that right now.
Okay. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. And I do understand there is a perception that we're looking to stop development, but I don't think that's the goal here. The goal here is to, one, get it right. And two, if we're able to move forward within those 270 days and we're able to do the outreach because somehow we're able to address the outreach, be very creative about how we can get the community's input. You know, as soon as we find that we have a plan to present and approve, we can set the hearing in July, if that's what we want to do. But if we get to July and we're not ready, and we haven't extended beyond that, we don't, we don't have the ability to do so. So as soon as we're ready, we can move forward. And the moratorium ends with setting the public hearing on adopting the plan. But without having the ability to address circumstances that are beyond our control and in a health crisis and a community that is highly compromised in being able to participate in the process, as evidenced by the last meeting, I think it would give us the time to do the right thing and really serve the community well. And I'd like to get this over with as soon as possible. But we do have to work within the law that does only allow us to extend one more time. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner White, would you please restate your motion?
Yes, sir. That was to direct Ms. Zornita to work with the county attorney's office to bring a plan back to the board to extend the moratoriums.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two with Commissioners Hagan and Merman voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill.
Yes, Commissioners, we have a few minutes before your 10:30 time certain. You could waive the rules and take that item, which is G1, if you like.
Okay, the motion to waive the rules to take up G1?
Same. Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner White, I believe, second by Commissioner Overman, to waive the rules to take up G1. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill, you want to say anything before we start?
No. This is a presentation by, I believe, Scott Strummer.
Right. Mr. Strummer, you recognize?
Morning, Scott Strummer, Procurement Services. I appreciate your base patience. I just want to give a quick recap of where we are on the recruitment right now. So on March 10th, we approved the executive recruiter's final schedule, which included one-on-one commissioner briefings with the executive recruiter on April 8th, selection of the top candidates at a regular meeting April 15th, and then again, one-on-one candidate interviews with each commissioner, and then a group interview by the board in the last week of April or first week in May. A public meeting was coordinated and scheduled right around March 13th, which was, coincidentally, happened to be the same day that we canceled, I believe, the events and all the meetings moving forward. So on March 28th, just given the circumstances, I reached out to the recruiter just to kind of finalize the schedule, make sure that where we were and how she was able to move forward, as expected, she did come back and say she was facing some challenges because most of the top candidates were working in their own communities and facing the same thing that we were, and they just weren't able to commit any time to this effort. And they certainly didn't want to shake up their own entities by, quite frankly, looking for another job while their own communities were in crisis. But her recommendation was to kind of just temporarily pause the schedule and kind of pause the process. During that time, she still received applications, she still actively recruited, she was screening candidates. Well, now we're at the point where it's time, she's really seeking guidance on how to move forward. And just, now, Ms. Narlock, the executive recruiter, is also, has joined the meeting and is available for questions as well. But at this point, we're, she just needs some guidance on how to move forward and the timing of moving forward. So with that, I'll turn back to you.
Okay.
Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Strummer. Let me say something here. I appreciate Mr. Strummer and Ms. Narlock for the work that they've done before the pandemic hit and after the pandemic hit in trying to carry forth recruitment process. So thank you, thank you so very, very much. We are in unprecedented times. Again, I say, if you weren't around in 1918, and I don't think any of you were, that was the last pandemic we had. And now we're in the midst of another pandemic. And even though states might be trying to open up, the medical experts are still saying that we're going to hit a peak either this year, this year during, right around the summertime or the latter part of the year. Again, that curve is not going to be flattened, it's going to peak again. And we are in some very trying times. Difficult, difficult times that we had a budget meeting. You saw what the outcome of those budget meetings were. They're going to be in terrible shape. If you read the papers today, the state of Florida's tourism is down tremendously, and the state of Florida's budget coming from tourists is, I mean, it's like, I think it's like billions of dollars that they anticipate that's going to be missing from the budget. It's going to happen to us too. And if you talk to San Telmo, Colorado, you will get an understanding of where we are and what problems we have. So we're going to need someone that can take this county through the rest of this year, getting us prepared for what's to come. And on top of that, in 25 days, hurricane season starts. And the prognosticators can say what they want about where hurricanes are going to hit and who can get themselves prepared for it. We have to be prepared regardless because the control of hurricanes is not in our hands. And this is a dream being in heaven. And I have a major, major concern that going outside of Hillsborough County to try to bring someone to come in here for OJT, on-the-job training while we're in the midst of a pandemic and hurricane season, puts us in a very, very bad position. That's number one. Number two, I've always felt that if we have qualified people within the organizations, they should be the ones that promote it. Felt that way. We did that with Mr. Merrill when we came on board and talking to people before we hired Mr. Merrill as county administrator. And the word was, well, he was the most qualified, and we hired Mr. Merrill. And I don't think, no, 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 we did not make a mistake. He took us through some very difficult times in this county when the economic downturn was here. We talked about having to lay off some staff. I think we laid off some and brought them right back because of Mr. Merrill's expertise in budget and finance and working and surrounding himself with some great people. He's done an excellent job, more than an excellent job, because he was here and has been here. Now, Mr. Merrill is scheduled to leave here, retire on June 30th. Having said that, the governor put a executive order out that basically said if you have essential people that you need to keep on board after retirement, you can do that. And the Florida retirement system has sent back information saying that if we wanted to keep Mr. Merrill on past his June 30th retirement date, he could retire, receive his retirement bonus, whatever it's called, drop bonus, and retirement checks if we want to keep him on board. And believe me, we need to have someone here to get us through at least the rest of this year with this pandemic and hurricanes on our doorsteps. I have, I don't think we need to have a search. I don't think we need to go through a search. I think when, if we're able to work something out, Mr. Merrill, when his time is up, I think we have a right person in this body that can continue to do the job that we need to have done through, again, this pandemic and hurricane season. So my thought process is that we don't do a search, that the search ends today. But I would like to hear from everyone says. And then after that, I would like to come back possibly for a motion. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in some terrible, terrible times, and there are more to come. The experts, healthcare experts, infectious disease doctors, epidemiologists are saying we're going to hit a peak again. And who's to know what's going to happen June 1st when hurricane season starts? And we just cannot afford to have someone come here that we have to have on the job training. It will put us behind the eight ball tremendously. So my thought process is that we curtail the search today, possibly looking at keeping Mr. Merrill on a little while longer if we're able to work some things out. And if that doesn't work out, we go on from there with another outlook. So I'm going to stop there. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well-stated, and at least for this commissioner, you're preaching to the choir. Remember, from the beginning of this recruitment process, I've been very vocal about my feelings regarding the need to hire an internal candidate should a qualified one exist. And I base this on a number of reasons. Number one, my experience with the last two internal administrator hires, simply put, they were seamless and successful. I have been on the hiring committee of several local CEOs where we hired external candidates. Candidly, some of them were, have been quite successful. But at the same time, just many were not successful and are no longer working in Hillsborough County. But at the same time, um, just many, uh, were not successful and are no longer working in Hillsborough County. Um, secondly, I've always felt that it strengthens employee morale whenever you promote from within. Uh, we're all quite aware of how unique our sunshine laws are, which are a challenge. But most importantly, um, the learning curve to be the CEO of a county of this size is extraordinary. Coming from the outside, it's impossible to hit the ground running. Uh, it will take months, uh, to adequately get up to speed. And simply put, we do not have that luxury right now. Uh, if an organization has a highly knowledgeable and skilled employee, it just doesn't make sense to me to just say, okay, you can go ahead and apply, but we're going to see what else is out there. I felt very strongly about this last year when we started this process. Uh, but I have to tell you, with the pandemic that we're in the midst of and with all of the challenges associated with this crisis and operating an organization of this size, my position has only strengthened. Uh, we've heard from Mr. Stromer about the challenges, uh, with the recruiter, as far as recruiting top candidates. And as Commissioner Miller said, we are in unprecedented and trying times. Now more than ever, it is critically important to have a seamless transition. Uh, we're going to have many challenges in the many months and years ahead, particularly budget and financial ones. As Commissioner Miller also stated, hurricane season is right around the corner. And then now to me, um, not only do we have a quality internal candidate, but her financial background, executive experience, not only at the county, but also with the city of Tampa, and the fact that she currently sits at the dais with us right now, uh, this is the perfect candidate at this time. Uh, we will be short-sighted, uh, not to recognize, not to recognize this and to act accordingly. So, that's basically where my thoughts are. I'm interested in seeing what the other commissioners say, but, uh, we do not have the luxury to, um, to go through a recruitment process and to bring, and attempt to bring someone in the outside, uh, in the midst of this pandemic. As Commissioner Miller said, these are unprecedented times.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I've, um, been in conversations with a member of the Hillsborough Legislative Delegation, uh, who's been helping me to gather information and, um, uh, be in touch with the governor's office. Uh, you know, the, the, the spirit of the governor's executive order is to allow people, uh, to stick around with an organization whose day-to-day primary duties would relate to emergency management. I don't have an up-to-the-minute number, but I know effective within the past week, there have been a very small handful of names that have been sent to the state pursuant to this, uh, executive order. I think the number was five or six, and they've all been first responders and people that are directly, uh, related, um, directly involved, uh, in emergency management, uh, day-to-day. Um, I think to use, uh, the emergency order to, uh, to keep a high-level administrator on board, uh, would, would run contrary to the spirit of the executive order. Uh, I have gotten word, uh, that the general counsel from the governor's office, uh, might have concern uh, with that sort of a maneuver. So I'm of the opinion, uh, I'm fine with promoting from within, uh, but I'm of the opinion, uh, that, that we should do that. Uh, we should, uh, promote from within. I'm content to do it today. We're only 55 days out from June 30th. Uh, so I would like to, uh, to see us, uh, promote, uh, from within and name a new county administrator effective July 1st.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner, hold on. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I'm sure Mr. Merrill is, with the idea of getting close to retirement and wanting to retire and getting ready to having a nice life, uh, beyond being a county administrator, uh, has had to really look hard at this, um, not only to stay on as an administrator and risk his retirement resources with uncertainty as far as an executive order from the governor, but also given the amount of work it's now taking to address the fact that we're in an emergency and by our charter, our county charter that identifies that our county administrator be the one that exec, you know, that, that mandates the orders, I think our charter supports the argument that he is considered an essential person, that it would qualify for that waiver of losing his retirement resources should he need to stay on. So if we need to get that opinion and get it verified prior to making any recommendations at this point, I think that would be um, beneficial not only to Mr. Merrill, but also to us in making these decisions. Secondarily, I think it's also critically important that we stay focused on the mission of what we have to serve our citizens during a state of emergency and during a state of financial, potential financial crisis, um, as we move forward through the end of the year and the next year, as we plan for our finances to address the unknowns as a consequence of this pandemic and our response, and our state's response, and the impact it has had on our citizens and our businesses within Hillsborough County. I continue to believe that by attempting to continue this process, uh, while the country is still in the grips of a pandemic is unrealistic because, you know, if we've got candidates that are thinking about leaving their county that where they've forgotten the mission because they're looking for their own personal transition, um, that aren't currently here working on the mission of serving, serving our citizens, I'm not sure we're going to end up with the best candidate anyway. Uh, my first priority is running this county in a way that makes sense for the health and safety of our constituents. And changing guard in the middle of this pandemic doesn't make sense to me. But I do recognize that we need a so long-term solution for the leadership at the county administrative role. I'm not opposed to continuing doing the search, but doing that right now would seem unrealistic. So I would suggest that we consider the best method of keeping Mr. Merrill in his current role so he can focus on that role um, for possibly six months or with possible extension, and then conducting the search at the end of that time period or when we get to a place where we're not in a, in an emergency. Um, granted, we've never dealt with a pandemic before. Uh, these are unusual circumstances. And I do believe any external or internal candidate that a search would produce would provide us with the best source of leadership within this county. There is nothing that would keep a search from allowing an excellent internal candidate from shining as one, wonderful as they could be, but that also allows them to continue doing whatever it is they are doing when we're all seeing that our staff is absolutely pressed to the max right now, dealing with all of the things that we're dealing with as a consequence of this pandemic. So I, I would, would suggest, or I'll make a motion to Direct County Procurement Services Department to work with our county attorney.
Commissioner Overman.
Yes.
I'm gonna rule you, I'm gonna rule your motion out of order because we still have some people who want to talk.
Okay.
Just hold on.
Oh, wait, thank you.
All right. You mentioned something before I call on Commissioner Merman, uh, about, uh, um, the governor's executive order, so did Commissioner White. I want to read to you what was said to us by Ms. Shirley Buford from the Florida Retirement System that was requested by, um, Ms. Burley in, in our human resource area addressing, uh, Mr. Merrill's situation in the executive order. So I'm gonna read this and so you all get an understanding. Uh, it says, uh, you stated that the agency's county administrator is considered an essential position for your agency's COVID-19 response on the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-88, and request insight to how he could work past his June 30th, 2020 drop-in date. Your initial inquiry was if the county administrator could be allowed to freeze his drop participation, continue working past June 30th through the COVID-19 emergency while, uh, postponing with termination for drop, and later terminate employment to finalize drop and collect his drop payment and begin receiving his monthly retirement benefit. This request was modeled after provision that allows elected officials whose drop participation ends during a term of office to freeze drop and postpone termination until the end of the term of office or the end of the future term of consecutively held offices. Florida law limits drop provisions to elected officials. Recent retirees who are hired, excuse me, excuse me, who are hired under this order may continue to receive their monthly retirement benefits and drop participation would have their drop payment processed, processed while working or providing services. Drop participation becomes recent, uh, uh, become recent, uh, recent retirees after their drop participation ends. Executive Order 20-88 suspends a termination requirement during the first six calendar months after drop termination and the reemployment limits during the next seventh through seventh, seventh to 12th calendar month. So she gave an example. A member's drop participation ends on, and she gave an example, but I'm going to use, uh, Mr. Merrill, June 30th, and is offered employment in emergency COVID-19 work with the FRS, but, uh, participating, uh, employment in, on July 1st. That's what Mr. Merrill. Normally, this will cause the member's retirement and drop participation to be void. Under Executive Order 20-88, the member's drop participation ends on June 30th. For Mr. Merrill, the monthly benefits will be paid beginning on July 1st for Mr. Merrill. Retirement benefits are paid at the end of the month for the month. The drop payout is being processed based on the member's specification. And the newly recent retiree works in July 1st for Mr. Merrill in a position covered by the executive order and receive both wages for work performed and retirement benefit in the same month without consequences while the executive order is effective. Recent retirees employed on, on Section 3 of Executive Order 20-88 are prohibited from occurring a future retirement for their, their employment under the orders. So consequently, their recent retirees are temporary employees for FRS purposes. No retirement contributions are owed on the salary of those retirees. And Section 4 of the order requires that the agency to certify to the division of retirement all recent retirees employed pursuant to Executive Order 20-8. An Excel template was included of this. So this gives us, if we wanted to keep Mr. Merrill on to the end of the year, the opportunity to do that. Um, through getting us through this pandemic and getting us through hurricane season, and then we would look at hiring someone, um, at the end of his time, if we, if that's something we desired, to keep Mr. Merrill on board. Uh, Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for that, uh, clarification. I think it is extremely important. Um, and I also want to remind everybody that we delegated, uh, Commissioner Miller as our chairman to, um, work on this, uh, with the procurement director, Mr. Merrill, and others, uh, regarding the staffs of the recruitment. So I will, um, I think any motions, I mean, I, I think Commissioner Miller is kind of testing the waters here to see how all the commissioners feel, and, um, like to see him come back with a motion. Um, that would probably be, um, to continue, um, working with the folks at the Florida Retirement System to see if, in fact, this is possible. Number two, if Mr. Merrill is willing. And number three, um, I, I'm not objecting to maybe, um, appointing an interim county administrator at, at this point because we may be on a short timeframe, and I think there needs to be some predictability for some folks and an internal candidate. And I'm also in favor of ending the search. Um, I, I, um, just, I do want to say these words, um, about Mr. Merrill because, um, and I have been thinking about this a lot. Um, you know, when you work with somebody for 10 years, you really get to know them fairly well. Um, he is probably one of the most calm, confident, decisive, solution-oriented individuals I've ever met. And he is the epitome of calm. Um, he would be a valuable asset anywhere, um, in our country, really, even internationally, and he's going to be a huge loss to our county and to our staff. So I just want to make those comments because, um, I think we're here discussing this, but I think, um, to recognize his contributions to our county over the last 10 years, I mean, he's taken us through a huge economic crisis, and many of you were not here. Um, it, it was, uh, it was something that I thought I'd never see again. Now I'm going to see it again. So, um, I hope that, uh, I think we're getting to a point, I think after hearing the conversations, where we know where we want to go. Um, I am not, um, in favor of, I'd like to just see us kind of move forward today, but allow you, Mr. Chair, to, uh, continue to work with the folks at FRS to make sure and that there is certainty about what will happen and that there is no going to be, uh, financial risk to us or to Mr. Merrill going down the road. So that's, those are my thoughts, uh, going forward, and I'm completely in favor of appointing Bonnie Weiss as our interim administrator, if that's, uh, the direction we want to go today. Uh, just to make sure we've covered our bases, if Mr. Merrill does extend, she would still be an interim, uh, working alongside him, which she does already. So, um, I think there's a seamless transition there that can happen, and, uh, Mr. Chair, I think you've, uh, been working on this, I know, a lot the last couple of months. Um, and you have a good handle on what you think should happen going forward. Thank you. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Merman, and, and to, to justify what you're saying, or just clarify what you said, that information I read to you came from FRS.
Yes.
Uh, from Talia Sherre Buford from FRS. So she clarified that if we decided that we wanted to keep Mr. Merrill past, uh, his, his retirement date and bring him back, there are some stipulations we can't do to bring him back whatever period of time. So that's, that's there. Uh, I do know that Mr. Merrill has some, some questions or some things he wanted to bring forth if we decide to do that. But I want to call on Commissioner Smith right now before it comes back to me for me to make a motion. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, and I appreciate the comments of, of everybody so far. You know, it's, it's clear that we're all trying to move this county forward in the best way possible, um, in trying times. Um, it, it's clear that Mr. Merrill and, and the administration has been, I don't know, working very hard to move us forward and, and do the best we can in very trying times. But this, uh, pandemic has been here for months now, and we have no idea how long it will continue. Uh, we are now in the recovery phase of the state of emergency. So it's very important that as we move forward into our future, whatever that includes more pandemic, hurricanes, we always face, um, whatever we have to deal with, we need to resume the normal order of government and carry on. We can't extend current staff, in my view, until we get a vaccine for COVID-19, uh, until all danger of hurricanes are passed, um, forever. That, we're always going to have difficulties and trying times, and, and we must move into our future, no matter how uncertain it seems right now, with the normal order of government to help our constituents feel assured that, uh, that things are moving as according to plan. And, um, so I do think we need a national search at some point. Uh, I agree with the comments that now is not the time, uh, for that. Uh, and I am in favor of, uh, uh, moving up an interim, uh, administrator who can uh, see us through, um, the rest of the year. And, um, I think it would be, uh, prudent and, uh, reassuring to everyone to, uh, begin that plan since Mr. Merrill's contract ends uh, June 30th. Um, so I would be for taking action today that sets course in that direction. Um, I know Ms. Wise's name has been mentioned, if that's, uh, where If that's, uh, where we have five votes, I would be supportive of that. Um, I, I agree with everything that's been said about her and her experience and capability to step right up and, um, do the work she's been, uh, right alongside of all this time. And, um, so that's, that's where I'm at. I feel like, um, we need to send a message that our county is, um, is stepping through these, uh, trying times in an orderly way and not, um, a fearful way. So, uh, thank you very much.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, I very much appreciate, uh, those comments, Commissioner Smith. Uh, I, I also think that we need to, um, proceed with the normal order of things and move forward. I have heard, I believe her name mentioned more than a few times or a reference to, um, Ms. Wise, uh, as an interim, um, county administrator. I would, uh, I do believe that in order, um, to appoint an interim or to, if there was, uh, any extension of Mr. Merrill's contract as administrator, it would take a super majority of votes. And it seems as though today, uh, there is a super majority, uh, here to support, um, Ms. Wise assuming interim leadership. I'd also, uh, want to see a national search, but agree that the continuity and stability at this time, someone, uh, who understands the county and, and it's, uh, has been here is a, is a better choice, uh, during this time right now. But, uh, I'm hoping that at a time in the future, we can, uh, pause the search right now, but, um, maybe continue it later in the year depending on, uh, what we see in terms of COVID-19 and, uh, how the county status in a number of months. So I would be very supportive, uh, today of, um, appointing Bonnie Wise, Ms. Wise as, uh, interim, uh, county administrator moving forward.
Mr. Brewer, are you on the phone, are you on, still on?
Yes, sir.
Who is P E R F I T R?
Believe that is Ms. Rosemary.
Rosemary Perfect. She's in the county attorney's office.
Who is that again?
Rosemary Perfect. She's in the county attorney's office, I believe.
She has her hand up. Would you, did you want to say something, ma'am? Hello?
Commissioner Miller, this is Christine. I think that's a mistake and I will try to address that, but I, I don't think you need to worry about that.
Okay, all right. Um, Commissioner Hagan, your hand still up? Is there something you want to say?
I'm sorry, I didn't intend for it to be up. I'm sure I'll have further comments, but after there's a motion or, or see what we go with.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, I've heard it, I heard you all speak and I appreciate your comments. I appreciate everything that you said. Um, and, and believe me, um, we are, again, in unprecedented times, but I am one that truly believes that, um, we need to, one, stop the search today, um, and either look at continuing Mr. Merrill's, uh, contract past July 1st for a period of time, uh, to get us through the rest of this pandemic year and the hurricane season. So I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice chair and make a motion that we stop the search, uh, for a county administrator effective today. Um, that's my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by the chair, uh, by, by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Merman. Is there any discussion?
I don't see.
I see, uh, Commissioner Smith's hand, please.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, so, Commissioner Miller, can I ask you about this motion? The motion, uh, is simply to end the search at this time?
I have another motion, I have another motion to follow.
Okay. And I see, um, I do see Ms. Narlock on the, uh, her name in the participants. Is she available? Could I ask her a question? Um, if we, if we make, if we make this, pass this motion to end the search, um, does that close off our options for a, um, uh, a, a future national search for a permanent, um, CEO? I mean, I think we might have the, or, or administrator, I think we might have the cart before the horse here, um, if we are going to, whether or not we're going to decide to continue Mr. Merrill or, um, uh, begin with, uh, hiring Ms. Wise as an interim, maybe that decision should come first, uh, before we decide to, uh, end the search. But if we end the search now, um, is there a way we could, we, it, would it be better in any way to pause it so that our options are still open, say by the end of the year, uh, and once things are clearer to us about which direction our emergencies are going, um, to resume that national search? So I'm asking Ms. Narlock if she's.
Good morning, Commissioner. Um, I, if we pause the search, if we're talking about several months, I do not expect that we would really get much out of the search process, um, by just pausing it. Um, I don't suspect that candidates would be applying during that time because we really don't know what our schedule is. And so I don't, I don't see the value added to, um, keeping the search process open. I think it would just be in limbo, quite frankly, um, during that entire time. Now, if it's a decision on behalf of the county, that would be easier to pick it up later by not officially closing out the contract or something like that. You know, that's, that's a possibility, but, um, I don't see any value to keeping it open or I, I don't believe that we're going to be effective in recruiting candidates if we don't have something more, um, a, a, a stronger framework, if you will, as far as a timeline is concerned. I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Can you raise your hand? I can't see the raised hand thing.
No, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no other hands up.
Okay, Chair, could you, uh, restate the, oh, Commissioner Kemp, you have your comment?
Yes, um, hearing that, I, I just, I also think it's kind of putting the horse before the cart here. And I, I, again, that's, that's a perfect way to describe it because I think we should, um, first consider, um, this interim, uh, director. So I'll, I'll be voting no on this because I'd, I'd like to, um, uh, continue the search or at least have a, uh, pause with a discussion, maybe keep the contract open, um, uh, figure out what we're going to do, uh, after. But, uh, I think today is the day to really, uh, talk about the interim and, um, and after we have that discussion to, to also think about this.
Okay.
Hands.
Uh, I actually have a question for Ms. Narlock as well as our, uh, attorneys. Um, this is Commissioner Overman. Um, as far as the suspending the search, we have applications that were submitted prior to the announcement of a pandemic. So there's clearly some candidates that went through the exercise of applying. Obviously, they're probably not in any position to actually follow through on that at the moment. Um, and in all transparency, it would make sense to, to continue that search and allow candidates to move forward. But it's, I, it sounds as though, Ms. Narlock, you're, you're opposed to, or you don't see the, the benefit of actually suspending, uh, the search at this point if we are going to continue with Mr. Merrill or appoint an interim? Is that?
Commissioner Overman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Um, what I would like to do, should we suspend the search and keep it open, is I would at a minimum like to notify candidates, uh, that have applied of the fact that we have suspended it. And then I would check back with them once we pick it up again, just to confirm that they still have interest in the process. Um, so, so I would, I would at a minimum like to communicate with candidates where we are, should we put the search process on an indefinite hold at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner, Commissioner Overman, before you go, let me make it perfectly clear. I didn't, my motion was not to suspend the search. My motion was to end the search.
Understood. All right, is there any more, uh, any other comments?
Commissioner Hagan's hands up.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
I apologize. I just needed to do a better job on the system.
Okay. If there's any other comments, could you please raise your hand? Actually physically raise your hand. Okay.
I don't see it. Commissioner Smith.
You're recognized. I can't hear you, can't hear you.
I'm sorry, but I'm still unclear as to, um, Ms. Narlock's, um, advice, uh, on, on this. It is our, do we have more options by, um, suspending rather than ending, uh, the search than we do if we end it and pick it up again anew at the end of the year?
Commissioner Smith, I think it would come down to if you, um, ended the search, that the contract that I have with you would be closed out as a result of that, and there would be a procurement process whenever it needed to start again. Um, my guess is if we suspend the search, um, then the contract, um, you know, we would probably have to extend the deadline on it. I'm assuming there's a closeout date on it, and it would just probably be easier to pick up later on if we needed to. But I, my, my, uh, what I do want to communicate is that if we suspend the search, I don't believe that there will be any search activity happening between the time it's suspended and the time we pick it back up. It would be like a, it would, it would be ramping it up completely again at a appointed time down the future, uh, down the road.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Narlock. Commissioner Smith, did you have enough follow-up?
So the value to, uh, suspending rather than ending is, um, that we could keep the contract open, uh, more easily, not go through procurement at the end of the year if that's our, our choice. And of course, we could always end it there when we have more information, um, as well as we would keep the current applicants kind of, um, advise them that the search has been paused and advise them of, you know, our discussion here and that we might be moving forward with an interim, but we would, um, kind of have that process more on pause. Have I got that right, Ms. Narlock?
Yes, Commissioner, but I will say that for the most part, I believe anybody who has applied for the job, once they know that, um, it's been suspended indefinitely, um, there's a, there's a likelihood that they probably would not remain in the pool of candidates. Um, they might, they might withdraw at that point and then choose to apply later on. Um, there's some exposure for them as candidates, uh, applying for a job in Florida, their name being exposed, and they have jobs where they are, of course. And, uh, so I, I really feel like it would be kind of a, a wash, if you will, suspending it indefinitely, that there's really not a lot of value to keeping it open as far as recruitment efforts and candidates and, and, um, and those types of things. That the only value I see is that, you know, uh, there might be a procurement process down the road to, to re-initiate a search, if you will, or just to, to start it again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, did you have a question or a comment?
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'd like to make a substitute motion to, um, suspend the search at this time.
Uh, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp. Do I have a, do I have a second? Dyes for the lack of a second. Back to the original motion. Uh, let's call the vote. Call the roll, please. Mr. Barrett?
Yes. Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Thank you. Thank you. The other part of this, uh, entire equation, uh, secondly is Mr. Merrill. Um, I have been in constant conversation with Mr. Merrill concerning the possibility, after I received the information from the Florida retirement system, of him staying on, I've thought in my mind, at least until December 31st, to get us through all the things I mentioned before. Um, we've had a long conversation. He's thought about it quite a bit. Um, he feels, I'm gonna let him speak for himself, but he feels that, uh, he has, he has a, he has a strong commitment to this county, as you all know. He's been with us 30 some odd years. He's been the chief, the county commissioner, county administrator, I think about 10 years or more, uh, taking us through some very difficult times, even right now, taking us through difficult times. And for those of you who have not been working with him during this time, I can tell you, um, he's had some sleepless nights and I have too. Um, and talking to him and seeing what his thought process would be of keeping him on at least, I say to December 31st, uh, there may be some difference in that, but I'm going to ask Mr. Merrill because he has some things that he wanted to put in place, uh, to have looked at, uh, if we're going to look at hiring him, um, after he retires June 30th and bringing him back on July 1st. So, Mr. Merrill, if you don't mind, I hope I didn't throw you, you know, the bus there, but, uh, would you please, but, uh, would you please make some comments?
No, not at all, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, first, you know, I just want to say it's been my honor to serve the, the county for 30 plus years and 10 years as the county administrator. Um, and I do very much appreciate, uh, some of the kind comments that, that some of the commissioners made yourself and Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Merman. Um, it's been a pleasure, you know, working with all of you. I clearly was, you know, on the track to retiring, um, but, you know, this, this does change the equation and I, I do have a strong commitment to the organization, to the, to the county and want to be helpful to the extent that the board wants me to be, that the community wants me to be helpful. Um, I did have some initial concerns. I think the, the email that you received from FRS helped to clear up a lot. Uh, FRS has made a determination that if the board wants to move forward, uh, that they have certified me as, as eligible under the governor's order. Um, and so I, I know that all of you can appreciate this just from a personal point of view. Um, you know, we all have a lot at risk when we work hard and, and we, you know, plan for retirement. Um, and, and so no governor's order is, is ever guaranteed. And the best evidence of that was recently the Illinois Supreme Court, uh, overturned the governor's stay-at-home order after a lawsuit was filed by a lawmaker in Florida. I mean, in Illinois, I'm sorry. Um, that's Illinois, it's not Florida, but I think the concept still, still is important, especially given some of the comments that Commissioner White made. Um, so what you and I talked about, Commissioner Miller, is that, you know, I'm happy to serve. I'm happy to be here to, in any way to help, but notwithstanding the, the governor's order that could be overturned in the future, and then I would be clearly without a pension, um, that I would, I would need the county to indemnify me if, if that should occur. And, uh, and my, my future pension would not be disrupted. I think that's a fair, reasonable request that any of you or anybody would, would want. Uh, I don't think it's unreasonable. Um, I do believe that it, it's not just simply executing a contract, the employment contract. Uh, you know, I think there are some legal issues that really the county attorney would have to opine on, that I would need to get an attorney. Um, I think all of that can be done, and I'm willing to do all of that to get it in place quickly, but I would want the county to at least, uh, you know, cover my, my attorney's costs up to a cap, which would be fair. Um, so. So, you know, with that, I think there's a way to get there. I'm willing to serve if you'd like me to. I think there's clearly the will to do that. And with that, again, it's, you know, it has been my pleasure to serve and will continue to do so any way that the, the board would like me to. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Mr. Merrill, let me ask you a question. You probably don't know this, maybe you have it off the top of your head. If we were to work this out, I think you have to have five votes, am I right, Ms. Beck?
That's my understanding, Mary Helen, can you confirm that?
Okay.
Yes, it would take five votes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Merrill, do you have any thoughts on the legal fees that you talk about? What would be the amount to, if we were to work it out, that you could stay to, say, December 31st, be through December 31st? And you want an attorney to look at your, your, your contract, if, when we get the contract or, and/or the indemnification document, how much that would cost?
I don't know for certain. I think a cap of $10,000 would be reasonable, I can't imagine it being more than that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Merrill. I'm not going to make a motion yet. I'd see some hands up, and then once they're done, I might, I will probably make a motion. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments from my perspective, and I really appreciate the dialogue and discussion that we've had this morning. Some excellent points from, from everyone. I want to start out by saying that I support extending Mr. Merrill, and I also support today hiring or moving forward with Ms. Wise being the interim administrator. I do not believe that they are mutually exclusive, although details would need to be worked out. And candidly, I don't know if there's board support or for both of them today, but I would support moving forward with both today. Commissioner Miller and Merman will remember this, but I'm, I'm the one who championed bringing Mike on as a county administrator back in 2010. Initially, there was a five to two vote to move forward with a national search, but after a lot of consideration and recognizing the challenging economic times we were in, that it was extremely important to have someone with Mike's financial expertise and background guide us through the challenging times. And without question, he was the perfect candidate at that time. I'm very proud of Mike's work, his leadership and his vision. And over the last ten years, I do respect his commitment. He's worked tirelessly, I cannot blame him if he wanted to ride off into the sunset, I know how hard he's been working. I would say, though, from my perspective, the most important thing is to keep Mike and have his guidance and direction through the most challenging times and through our budget process, which would be the end of September. So I would support extending Mike through September 30th, which will get us through the most challenging times, get us through our budget and moving forward in that, in that manner. And then I would also support, as I stated, bringing on Ms. Wise as the interim. We'll have to work out the details, I'm sure we can't do that today, but that's where I would like to see the board go. Again, I'm not sure if there's support for, for either or both, but I'm hopeful that we'll move forward in that direction. I'm happy to make a motion for, in fact, I'll go ahead and do that for, for, for Mr. Merrill. I'll make a motion that, that we extend his contract through, through September 30th and have Ms., have the county attorney draft whatever documents, whatever due diligence we need to, to ensure that Mike's comfortable with, with staying around. I'll go ahead and make that motion, and we'll see where, we'll see where things go.
I'll second. Commissioner Merman?
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Hagan, I would like, if you're possible, to add, if you could withdraw your motion restated and add a cap of $10,000 legal fee paid by the county for Mr. Merrill.
Absolutely, I'll, I'll rescind the motions, make a new motion that, that we will extend Mr. Merrill through September 30th and that we'll have $10,000 for any, any legal fees that Mike may incur throughout this process.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan, for your comments. Mike's study leadership has probably stuck with me the most as something he certainly left a legacy in the county and on this board. Definitely support the motion. I would have liked to have seen added in there the appointment of Bonnie Wise as interim administrator, but that it would be permanent on October 1st. I don't know if you're willing to restate a new motion to add that in, or if you want that handled separately. And I'll leave that up to you and the chair going forward. Thank you.
Well, Commissioner Merman, what I was going to do, that you mentioned that, that Commissioner Hagan has made a motion to bring Mr. Merrill back on a contract from July 1st through September 30th. And I was going to make another motion after this, see what happens with this one, if it passes, to hire Ms. Wise as a permanent county administrator effective October 1st.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice chair and add a, an amendment to Mr., to Commissioner Hagan's motion that we hire Ms. Bonnie Wise as a county, permanent county administrator effective October 1st, 2020. That's my amendment.
I'll second that. Okay, we have an amended motion and a second, any discussion? Please. Okay.
Commissioner Kemp's hand is up.
Commissioner Kemp? And then Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I just would like to say, if this motion fails and I won't support it, that I would like to make a motion afterwards to hire, to have Ms. Wise take over and as county administrator on July 1st, when Mr. Merrill's contract expires, he would need five votes to, for this motion to, to support Mr. Merrill. Ms. Wise has been with the county since 2011, that's a long time. She, she manages the budgets, she understands that and has that experience. So I think she is the best qualified in terms of that. And I guess in terms of Mr. Merrill extending him, I think, I guess that would be, I'm thinking that when, so initially, it was as if the discussion was about extending him as a consultant of some sort, but now it's extending him as actually the county administrator still. So I wouldn't be supporting the motion, but if it fails, I will make a, another motion for Ms. Wise at that time.
Commissioner Smith's hand is up.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, and I also feel confident that we're going to have to change administrators at some point. And, and whether we hire from a national search or move Ms. Wise in as an interim, we will have somebody who can handle our budget. We will have somebody who can handle our next budget and our next one and our next one. So I don't see the point in extending an administrator to handle our budget. And, and as I've said with the pandemic, we have no idea how long this is going to last or where it's going to go from here. Hurricanes hit our state routinely and our community from time to time. We're, we're going to have to move on to a county administrator who can handle all the things that this large county faces. I have full faith and confidence that Ms. Wise can handle that from day one, starting now as an interim. I, I would hope that whoever we hire, if we hire anyone else later, would also be, be able to handle the things that our county has to handle. So I will not be supporting extending Mr. Merrill's contract. I, I think moving on with the normal order of government is very important to reassure our citizens that we are indeed moving through this without, without extraordinary measures of, of emergency extensions of contracts and when we have capable people right here.
Okay, any other, any other hands raised? I have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Commissioner Hagan's hand is up.
Recognized.
Thank you. I was just going to say that I, I do support Commissioner Miller's amendment. Only reason why I thought that these issues should be bifurcated is that I didn't, I don't believe that there's going to be support for both. I could be wrong, but that's the reason why I wanted to have separate motions. I do believe that there's a significant amount of, of value in extending Mike for another three months. Like I said, my initial comments, the details would have to be worked out. And that's what I meant as far as whether it's as administrator, consultant, in whatever capacity that is, the details would have to be worked out. But in any event, I do believe that there's value in extending Mike for, for three months. But I do support the amendment and obviously the motion.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
I withdraw my amendment. I'll come back after we vote on, on the original motion. I withdraw my amendment.
Okay, okay, great. In light of that, and to Commissioner Hagan's motion, I believe I have a comment. But could you do me a favor and restate that motion? I have a five-year-old who needed something in the middle of all of this, so I, the actual language, you could help me with that, appreciate it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hagan, would you restate the motion, please?
Sure, the, the motion was that we would extend Mr. Merrill for an additional three months and set aside $10,000 to assist Mike in any legal issues that he incurs on this process.
Okay, so your motion actually does address extending the contract, extending the cost of assuring that he is, is protected from a change in the executive order and, and picks out three months, and yet we're not beyond hurricane season. Is there September 30 or three months, is there a specific goal there that you're trying to accomplish? Because I'm, I'm concerned that we will still have a mission that we have to serve. I'm also concerned that we're in the middle of budget season through the summer months until, say, September 30. And, and while I hear where we're going with this, and I'm, I'm supportive of that direction, I'm just trying to understand the September 30 date that you have in mind. Is there a specific reason that you have three months in mind?
Primarily that will get us through the, the budget season. And, and I'm, I'm hopeful that in additional three months, we will have, I'm not going to say completely weather the storm with the crisis, but that'll get us through the most challenging elements of the recovery.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan and a second by Commissioner Merman?
I have, I have, Commissioner Oberman, Commissioner Oberman, Commissioner Oberman, Commissioner Oberman have the floor back, because I would do.
Fine, thank you. We're back on the motion.
Have the floor back. Commissioner Merman, I see your hand.
No.
We're back on the main motion.
Sorry. I forgot to.
Commissioner Merman, I see your hand.
No, I forgot to put my hand down.
Commissioner Merman?
Okay, can't hear me again. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Commissioner Miller's breaking quite a bit, and that's why he's.
For clarification. Okay, for clarification.
Can you hear me, Commissioner Oberman?
Can you hear me? Can you hear us?
I hear all y'all.
Commissioner Merman, can you hear me?
Okay, good, okay. I'm not, I don't want to speak any further.
All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Commissioner Miller.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman, and for the clarification from the county, county attorney, we need five votes. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Oberman?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
No.
Motion fails four to three with Commissioners Kemp, Smith, and White voting no.
Okay. Mr. Merrill, thank you very much for your, your willingness to serve this county, and thank you very much for all that you've done for this county. You took us through some very difficult times. Commissioner Merman and myself and Commissioner Hagan was here when you took us through those times. And you kept us budgetary-wise, spirit-wise, on the course. We never lost a rating from any of our three rating companies, we're always with AAA. The only county in this country that was AAA during those difficult times. You put plans into place to try to help our transportation system. Unfortunately, it didn't work, but you did that, and you've been steadfast for the ten years that I've known you. We're going to lose you on July 1st, unfortunately, but I just want to say, on behalf of Les Miller, thank you very much for all that you gave this county, we do appreciate it. I'm going to make another motion now that affected, you're welcome, Mr. Merrill, effective July 1st, that we hire Ms. Bonnie Wise as a permanent county administrator, that's my motion. I'll pass the gavel to the vice chair.
Second. So we have a motion by the chair, by Commissioner Miller, a second by Commissioner Merman. Is there any discussion? Please raise your hand. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Miss Smith, Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I am very supportive of having Ms. Wise be an interim. I think whether we continue with the, an internal candidate permanently is something that would be best reviewed later on in the year and possibly consider a, a national search. I feel, as I've said before, that this is a big county with a big budget, and administrator is a, a big job. And in order to have the credibility that is needed to deal with our citizens, have the confidence of our citizens and deal with the press and deal with us, eventually, we're going to need a county administrator that has survived, stood up, won the job from a national search that has, that can show that, that our candidate is the best, the very best that we could have gotten from the nation. And I think an internal candidate would, I would, I would think would welcome that process in order to prove that they have won the job and, and to put aside any doubts in the public mind that, oh, we've just promoted somebody from within, but we could have done better if we had a national search. So I think it's really important, just for the, the protection of, of Ms. Wise, if she ends up being that permanent administrator, that she has gone through that process. So I would, and I think it's just, it's just appropriate for a county our size and budget. will join me as I make a amendment to the motion to make it for an interim and not a permanent position. That's my amendment.
Second, this is Commissioner Kemp.
Okay, we have an amendment to Commissioner Miller's motion and a second by Commissioner Kemp. Any discussion on the amendment? Please raise your hand, because I cannot see. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Commissioner Merman has her hand up.
No, I didn't, sorry. Okay.
I don't see Commissioner Kemp's hand.
I saw Commissioner Kemp's hand, and then I saw Commissioner White's hand. Mr. Kemp?
My hand down.
Please, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think I couldn't really put it any better than Commissioner Smith said it right then. I, from the start, have supported a national search. I think we're way too big a county to not consider that in the future. There's nothing to do that now, but that's why I'd like to, and I cannot believe that Ms. Wise and everyone else would not want us to at least consider. That doesn't mean that Ms. Wise wouldn't be the ultimate choice, but not consider that in the future, not even as we haven't done. We don't have it on the table right now, but that's why I would totally support and wholeheartedly, hello, support her as the interim county administrator. I think she's a wonderful person to bring on with deep roots and understanding and widespread respect throughout the county, and then her incredible budget experience. I just feel like she, I'm, I'm very, very happy to have her willing to move forward as an interim county administrator, but I would like it to be interim.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Before Commissioner White, you comment, Mr., Commissioner Miller, are you able to hear us now? You phased out there for a minute. Okay, great. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Yes, I just need the motion to amend, restate it.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
So the motion to amend would be to make Ms. Wise a interim administrator rather than a permanent administrator.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or hands raised? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say something.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
I have a question, I have a question of Ms. Beck. Does amendment require five votes?
Yes, it does, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let me, let me say this. We've made a decision to not continue our current county administrator in the middle of an emergency, of which that person is given the role of acting as the executive in our, managing our entire emergency, you know, operations for all practical purposes, as well as the county during budget season. And we are in this, in this series of motions, the original motion and then the amendment, going to suggest that, or, or hire Ms. Wise, who's, I think, is stellar and wonderful and, and can't say enough about her, I've known her for years, to take an interim position instead of making a full-on commitment to hiring her for a job that most people wouldn't want at this point. Anybody in their right mind has got to be passionate about Hillsborough County. So while I will support the original motion to hire Bonnie Wise as our county administrator, I, I don't, I don't know that I could support the amended, because I don't believe doing a halfway job of hiring someone is by having it be interim is appropriate in this particular circumstance. So I, I won't be supporting the amendment, although I am pleased to consider the original motion. With that, are there any other comments? Commissioner Hagan?
Yeah, quickly, I completely agree with, with Commissioner Overman, and I must say, this is, for me, this is deja vu all over again. I mean, I'm, I'm hearing the same arguments that we heard back in 2010 on why we must do a national search. Well, the reality is, we couldn't have hired a better candidate than we did with Mike Merrill. I think in hindsight, every single one of us would agree with that. We were right to make that decision then, and we would be right and accurate today to make the same decision and bring on an internal candidate that's not only qualified, but as I stated earlier, her, her, her financial acumen and her background in finance is, is second to no one. And her, not only that, but her experience, executive experience with the county, with the city of Tampa, and the fact that, again, she sits with us already. So I think that, I, I can't support the motion enough, and I think it's the right person at the right time, and I hope there's, there's board support for Ms. Wise.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Thank you, and I will agree with Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Overman. You cannot, I mean, that would be a slap in the face, in my opinion, to Bonnie Wise, to hire her as an interim when she is clearly and could be sought out anywhere in, in this country as a permanent administrator. In fact, and I don't know, this question would be for Commissioner Hagan, when you first, when they approved Mike Merrill, it was for an initial two years, is that correct? Do you remember?
We'd have to ask Mike. I think that's correct, but we'd have to, we'd have to ask him. I believe we made a move also.
Mr. Merrill?
So I started as an acting, an acting position, and then, then it was interim, I think, for 10 months. And then, and then finally, so in, in total, I was in a non-permanent position for about a year before I was made permanent.
Okay, thank you. So I am definitely not supporting the amendment on the floor, and I'd ask Commissioner Miller to not only make it permanent, but if he redo his motion to make it for two years. Okay, so we have an amendment to, to consider and vote on to the motion. Any other comments? And Commissioner Smith, would you restate your amendment to Commissioner Miller's motion?
The amendment is simply to make Ms. Wise an interim as opposed to permanent administrator, county administrator.
Okay, call for the vote. Thank you.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
No.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion fails two to five with Commissioners Miller, Hagan, Merman, Overman, and White voting no.
Commissioner Miller, do you want to restate your motion?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to withdraw the motion and restate the motion that we hire Ms. Bonnie Wise as a permanent county administrator effective July 1st, 2020, with a two-year contract, and I'll also add that, that I work with Ms. Wise and the legal department to structure that contract. We brought back before the board prior to July 1st. That's my motion.
Second. We have a, a motion by Commissioner Miller, a second by Commissioner Merman. Any further discussion? Any hand, raise your hands, I can't see. Okay, great. Call for the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
Commissioner, Commissioner, Ms. Wise, congratulations. We'll be working with you to come up with the contract. Thank you very, very much. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, so we have remaining one time certain, it's been 45.
Mr. Merrill, before you do that, Ms. Wise, anything you want to say? I didn't know you were the, anything you want to say, Ms. Wise?
I'm sorry, I did raise my hand, Commissioners. I just am humbled and honored by the confidence you've placed in me, and I look forward to working with you into the future. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Okay, Mr. Merrill?
Ms. Commissioner Miller, can we take a five-minute break?
Okay. Any objection to five-minute recess? Okay, it's now 11:46, we come back at 11:51. We've had a recess for five minutes.
Chairman is ready. V O C C members, you are live in three, two, one.
I had to call our meeting back to order. Mr. Merrill? Let's hold off a minute, I don't think Mr. Merrill's back yet. Mr. Merrill?
Yes. My dogs appreciated the break, too. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Merrill, we're back in session, go ahead.
Okay, that takes us to your 10:45 time certain B8, which is the one concerning the CARES Act. And I think Kevin Brickie is going to introduce it, and then Ron Barton will, will take part of it as well.
Yes, sir. This is Kevin Brickie, Management and Budget. Yes, I will introduce the item and then hand it off to Mr. Barton for some further slides. I will share my screen. The item is related to the, the CARES Act funding that the county has received from the federal government. The CARES Act was passed by Congress and signed into law by the President on March 27th. It was a two, or is a $2 trillion relief package. The Treasury identifies four main areas. Assistance for American workers and families, that's the economic impact payments, assistance for small business, paycheck protection program, preserving jobs for American industry, and assistance for state and local governments, which is where we're going to talk about today. That assistance is $150 billion of direct payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the impact of COVID-19. States receive funds in proportion to their relative population among the 50 states, and a state will receive at least $1.25 billion. Local governments with populations over 500,000 are eligible for direct payments, which means Hillsborough County is eligible. The state and local allocation for Florida is $8.3 billion, and on April 22nd, Hillsborough County received $256.8 million pursuant to the CARES Act, state and local government aid. The CARES Act provides that payments from the fund may only be used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19, and the Treasury does very much stress that requirement. It also requires that these costs were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, so for us, that's the adopted FY20 budget, and that those expenses were incurred during the period that begins on March 1st and 1st and ends on December 30th. And dollars not spent by December 30th must be returned to the U.S. And dollars not spent by December thirtieth must be returned to the U.S. Treasury. Some further guidance has been issued by the Treasury in the forms of some clarification. What are necessary expenditures? Those necessary expenditures are incurred due to the public health emergency responding directly to the emergency, such as addressing medical or public health needs, but also responding to what are called second-order effects of the emergency, such as providing economic support to those suffering from employment or business interruptions due to COVID- nineteen-related business closures. The Treasury always talks about COVID-related nineteen necessary uses. Revenue replacement is not a permissible use, so that is related to revenue that might be lost by a government due to second-order effects. That is not a permissible use to replace that. A cost the Treasury has verified is incurred when the responsible, you know, the government has actually expended the funds to cover the cost. So that means that the funds are spent by December thirtieth of this year. Furthermore, a government should keep records sufficient to demonstrate that the amount of fund payments to the government has indeed been used in accordance with the Act. In other words, that it's COVID-related, COVID-nineteen-related necessary expenditures. Uses that are found to not have sufficient documentation are subject to funding forfeiture. And third-party expenditures that may occur as a result of this funding, those don't have sufficient documentation, those also must be repaid to the Treasury by the county. So we're ultimately, ultimately responsible for sufficient record-keeping. This guidance is evolving. The Treasury has started out with a frequently asked questions document that had four questions on it, and yesterday it expanded to seven different questions. So it is a evolving process. The CARES Act funding, how we propose to use it in two broad areas. One is life safety programs in the area of about thirty-five to sixty million dollars, things like food distribution, rent and housing and childcare utility bill support, testing sites, PPE, resources to ensure social distancing and sanitation, facility safety improvements. And then we're looking at economic recovery as well, economic recovery programs of somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and ten to two hundred and fifteen million dollars. Things that would include workforce training and rehiring, business recovery, safe work environments. So this item is asking the Board to approve a budget amendment to appropriate these funds that have been received, approve the plan for the use of the CARES Act funding to include the following program areas, and these are in ranges because as needs and experience roll out, there may need to be some adjustments. One is workforce training, thirty to sixty million dollars, accelerated business recovery, fifty to eighty-five million dollars, back-to-work grants, fifty to thirty-five billion dollars, safe-at-work mitigation grants, it says home there, it should say safe-at-work mitigation grants, fifteen to thirty-five million dollars, life safety programs, thirty-five to sixty million dollars. And we're asking that you would approve these allocation ranges for programs, and that the staff would regularly update the Board on program progress and seek Board approval if program changes need to be made or new budget ranges are required. And we would look to the Board for those changes, material, in the, material changes in the programs. I'll go over the life safety programs. Mr. Barton is going to go over the economic recovery programs. Again, in life safety, we're looking at thirty-five to sixty million dollars. One, we've discussed already, some, the Rapid Response Recovery Program where that program is offering up to two months of past due housing assistance payment for rent or mortgage, and one month of utility payment assistance for those who were actively employed and were negatively affected by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Fifteen million dollars has already been committed. We may look to expand that. Direct community services, that's where testing sites and testing services and personal protective equipment and supplies enter the picture for this CARES Act, providing housing and shelter for those displaced by COVID-nineteen, and supporting nonprofits, childcare centers as relates to sanitation and improving social distancing measures. Local food purchase and distribution. We're looking to partner with regional, local food banks to purchase fresh-produced dairy and meat from Hillsborough County producers. We will look to community organizations to provide those products to those in need due to COVID-nineteen. Again, always due to COVID-nineteen. This would include a program with Feeding Tampa Bay to provide sixty-four thousand meals per month for vulnerable residents such as seniors and displaced families that are sheltering in place to reduce the risk to COVID-nineteen and comply with public health precautions, including social distancing. The program envisions hiring forty furlough workers part-time for the Feeding Tampa Bay warehouse to help support this effort, and also providing grocery meals to support increased demand, up to two million meals a month to distribute. For the, again, for those who have been negatively affected by COVID-nineteen. And then also in the area of food and such, envisioning with Metropolitan Ministries providing groceries to support increased demand from twenty-eight thousand eight hundred meals a month to a hundred and eighteen thousand meals a month, again, for those who have food securities due to COVID-nineteen, and looking at two hundred and twenty-five thousand bag grab-and-go meals at meal and distribution sites. And then we're also looking at, within this thirty-five to sixty million dollar range, improvements that government and community facilities and operational safety. This is to make sure that the public is, is, is safe and protected when conducting business at county facilities or other community facilities, such that there may need to be a reengineering of things to make sure that social distancing is proper, to make sure that sanitation is proper, and to, again, keep the public safe and minimize any additional spread. This also would include related safety improvements that might be suggested by constitutional officers and municipalities. What are the next steps in regard to this area? Well, disperse, disperse the remaining funding to the Rapid Response Recovery applicants received to date, accept applications for a second round of Rapid Response Recovery, execute funding agreements with Metropolitan Ministries, Feeding Tampa Bay, and other food banks that would be used in that effort, implement government and community facility and operational safety improvements, and review, rank, and recommend funding for direct community services for EOC action. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Barton. And let's see. Need to unshare.
Thank you, Kevin. It's in my live, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, sir, you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. It's Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator for Economic Prosperity. I'd like to share with you an additional PowerPoint that I will speak from. You'll bear with me one second. Okay, we should be up. Commissioner Miller?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. As Kevin said, frankly, what we are bringing forward to you is a combination of relief programs, but also forward-looking economic recovery programs. And so Kevin's overview of several really important program recommendations deal with the struggles that our citizens are already having. They deal with injuries that are already occurred. But one of the things that we want to do is start to target local needs related to recovering our economy. And so I think first and foremost, we want to talk about these recovery programs, pivoting our response to be more proactive in engaging and restarting our economy. So this is about what we do to move forward, not necessarily what's happened to us to date. And we also want a central theme for these programs to drive outcomes related to our economy. We want our businesses to open their doors. We want them to start providing services and commodities to our citizens, and we want to put people back to work. So that's, that's a central theme that you'll hear as we talk about the programs that we are recommending to you. We also have an emphasis on small businesses and businesses in disadvantaged areas who have been economically injured by COVID-nineteen. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And certainly, we want to target industries with the greatest need and most impacted. There are some portions of our economy that have weathered this better than others, and we believe that they can take advantage of federal programs and continue to recover and drive our economy. But there are others that have not been able to, and we want these programs to be very sensitive to that. Again, I mentioned that these businesses take advantage of the federal programs and avail of traditional banking, but there are also many in the small business world that cannot do that. The PPP program already showed some were left out, not just because the money ran out, but because there were, there were cracks. And we want to be mindful of using our local funds to address those weaknesses. And lastly, on this slide, I want to point out, these are county-wide programs. We're rolling out recovery programs that affect all of our citizens and all of our businesses, whether you're in municipality or an incorporated area. So we, these are county-wide programs that we recommend that we administer. Programs, as I said, are structured to expedite recovery. It's about forward-looking. And so we have tried to craft programs that we think are holistic in nature, and I'll talk about some of that as we go through the presentation, about how they work together. They are meant to complement and address gaps in the federal and state programs. The fact of matter is, I mentioned earlier, there are mid-size and large companies that can either avail themselves of their traditional lending partnerships or the federal and state programs, and they can move forward with opening our economy. But there are others, particularly in our small business and disadvantaged areas, that fall through the cracks, and we want these programs to speak to them. We want to focus on a full continuum of needs, and what I mean by that is, and you'll, you'll see this when we talk about the details, we want to address physical space issues for our businesses, recognizing that they want to keep their employees and their customers safe, given the new normal. We also want to ensure that we look at our workforce needs in our community. Fact of matter is, there's a significant number of folks that are unemployed. And at least in the near term, many of them may not return to the occupations or the industries that they were formerly employed in. So workforce training is going to be a key. And then we want to provide capital for businesses to start up, reopen, and get the economy going. One of the key elements of this, and again, it's back to recovery versus relief, is that the businesses must be in recovery mode, open and operational. So this is not a grant programs for what has happened to you. These are grant programs to help you move forward and start our economy. And I just use the word grants. All these programs are structured as grants. We, I could tell you as a staff, we evaluated multiple options, and clearly there were discussions about whether some of this money might be structured as loans or forgivable loans or any number of those. But in order to really kickstart the economy, and also address, address the Treasury mandates for getting these dollars spent for COVID-related, you'll see that every program we recommend to you is a grant program. We also want to make sure, and we acknowledge, that we have a streamlined, simple application process to expedite reviews and payments. And I'll talk about this a little bit further, but we want to use, obviously, an online application system. Certainly, what we've learned from both the city's experience and Carl Harness and his team, we need third-party contractors to help us with the demand of this. If we had a lockdown with fifteen million, we'll have a lockdown on three hundred, two hundred and fifty million. So we need help, and we need to think through that very carefully. And one of the things that we're going to recommend to you is a phased rollout. We want these dollars out quickly, but we want to be thoughtful about sequencing them to help the business world and also to not overwhelm us as we roll these out. So those are some comments. And this is a little bit redundant, but I also wanted to just cover it. So the programs we see will be staged in order of sequence of need. And I'll go into some details about that, but you see that we recommended some programs that addressed almost pre-opening and opening requirements for physical space changes. That can get sequenced a lot earlier than per-head hiring incentive. So we're, we're mindful of having to sequence these and not throw them all out at the same time. Of course, the opening of our economy is still going to be guided by the governor's orders and reopening plan and the sequences. But we're also going to have ongoing guidance from the medical community as well as the industry. We're working, as you well know, with the EDC and Career Source Tampa Bay, and we want other industry representatives like the Hotel Motel Association and others to provide us guidance as we move forward. Kevin mentioned what we think is a key issue. We quoted ranges because we want to be adaptable. We don't know what we don't know about next month or the, or the month after that. So further medical guidance, industry guidance, and governor's guidance, we want to be flexible with that. And we want, we want to be able to finalize both the program descriptions and the implementation, implementation systems within the next two weeks. That's a tall order. We have a lot to do. I'll go over that in detail, but time is of the essence, and your staff understands that. What I'd like to do is just shift for a second and just give you a brief overview of the four major program recommendations that we're making. I can't stress enough, we think that they fit very well together. They're complementary. Not everyone will apply for all four grants. In fact, some will, will be appropriate to apply for those grants and some will not. It's very appropriate that I start with workforce training. We've got to remember our people are hurting. We have, we're going to have over a hundred thousand people unemployed in this county. And as I mentioned before, we have people that frankly are not going to go back to the jobs or the businesses that they used to work in, at least not for the near term. And so we need to be mindful of that. And one of the things that I'm very hopeful in allocating these dollars to workforce training is that some of these folks that are hurting can use this downtime while they're still getting unemployment compensation and other help. They can also get retraining opportunities that they can take advantage of now while there's downtime, so they can be better positioned for the jobs that are going to become open as the economy opens. So it's appropriate that we start with our people in this first one. And key, key partners of this are going to be Career Source Tampa Bay, clearly, the state's workforce agency, which is already in the workforce training business pre-COVID. They will be big time in the training business with these programs. And we're going to have multiple training partners, certainly key educational institutions like HCC, who serves the yeoman's job in training folks in our community for jobs now, but also USF and other educational institutions and some private training institutions. So they're going to be key partners in this. The work training that we're proposing is both individual and individualized worker training, but also a key aspect that's worked very well pre-COVID and will post-COVID is business training. In other words, grants to In other words, grants to businesses to provide tailored training unique to their company. And then one of the things that I wanted to point out that we paired with this program recommendation is a hiring incentive. So I would say this, the worst thing we could do is spend a lot of money training people and not placing them at jobs. And so one of the things that we see with these dollars is not just the training programs, but a hiring incentive on the backside. So it's an incentive for companies to take these folks that have gone through these programs, get a hiring incentive, and finish the continuum of service to these people. The second program that I mentioned is the Safe at Work mitigation grants. In this particular grant, we're talking about helping our businesses reopen. Yet, the new normal is going to require them to do certain building reconfigurations, just like the county and other city government. The city government, we're going to have to have building reconfigurations to protect their workers and their customers. But they may also need equipment. They may need some revisions to technology infrastructure because they're going to deliver their services of their customer differently. And of course, life safety requirements for PPE and other things, so that they can open their doors but do so meeting their obligations, not only legally but ethically, to keep their employees and their customers safe. But it's also going to recognize the need for some help to reconfigure an opening. So this is a grant. I mentioned to you that we see things sequencing. This is one we would want to get out very early because this is actually helping them open the doors, keep people safe, and start their businesses. And so that's just a glimpse into that concept. The third program that I want to talk about is the Accelerated Business Recovery, or what we're kind of calling Kickstarting Grants. We want to kickstart our economy. Many use analogies. We have to prime the pump, but we want to be able to get our businesses started. These grants are about helping them get going so that their normal business models can attempt to recover and start our economy back. So this particular grant program is meant for an immediate infusion for capital for small businesses. I mentioned this earlier. It's intended to complement the federal and state recovery programs, recognizing that some of them fell through the gaps or they can't avail themselves of traditional lending. So we want to be able to help kickstart. And I mentioned this earlier before, but it's a central theme of all of our recovery programs. We want outcomes associated with this, which are businesses opening, businesses starting to run their business, and businesses rehiring people. So it's critical that, you know, the grants recognize that this was not backward-looking, but it's forward-looking with outcomes related to our economy starting back up and putting people back to work. And then the last program we call the Back to Work Grants. Again, this is a pairing that fits well, but we want incentives that are crafted to get residents rehired or, in some cases, brought back from furlough. That's frequent as well. And this is the one area, most of our program criteria is going to be written for small businesses and disadvantaged areas, but this is the one program we think can also apply to midsize and larger companies. They may not take advantage of any of the other programs. In fact, they may not be qualified for the other programs. But some of the midsize and large companies can either rehire or, in fact, create new jobs, and we want some incentives to do that as well because the midsize and large companies can make a big impact on putting a significant number of workers back to work as well. And then lastly, thank you for your patience. Next steps for the recovery programs. We need to finalize the program details and criteria. We brought you our best thinking. We wanted you to bless the concepts. I will readily admit to you, we've got more details to figure out, but we're doing it literally by the hour, and we will keep you updated on that. That's a critical next step. Another one is that we want to secure third-party vendors for our online customer interface for processing and compliance. The one thing we've learned from the efforts, the good efforts that we've done today is this can be overwhelming. And so we want to be efficient and effective in getting it out. We want our citizens and our businesses to feel good about the programs, not vilifies for how we roll them out. And the compliance is important. Kevin and Bonnie have talked about this, but we need to ensure that we meet the treasury requirements. So there is going to be compliance requirements. We can't just say, here's the grant. We're going to need to still monitor it, and we want to because we want to recalibrate our efforts over the coming months to make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we want. The third one is very important. We need to work with the clerk of the court on payment protocols so we don't have any hiccups, and we want to be consistent with their requirements as well. Clearly, we're going to publish application guidelines, FAQs, media outreach. That's the rollout, and so that will be forthcoming as well. And then one of the things I did want to point out is something we want to bring back to the board immediately, is we want to go ahead and get at least a portion, a significant portion of the workforce training dollars over to Career Source as immediately as possible. People are out of work. Now's the time for them to be retraining and repurposing to maybe a new career and occupation. Let's use that time now wisely with ourselves and with them. And so we want to be able to bring a contract back that moves some of those workforce training dollars over to Career Source. They're going to have partners as well. It's not all a Career Source issue. They'll be using, as I mentioned earlier, HCC, USF, private training providers, and they'll also be configuring grants that go directly to businesses to train. But that's an immediate action we want to bring back to you as well. So that was a lot, but I wanted to at least summarize our program recommendations to you through this PowerPoint. And Commissioner Miller, Chair Miller, I'll be turning it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barton. Thank you, Mr. Brick. Is anything else you need to add?
No, sir. It's, we're asking for approval of the item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, seconded by Commissioner Overman. Let me say something here before we took a vote. It never ceases to amaze me that our staff can put together programs that contains millions of dollars to help this community in a matter of days. We saw it happen with the 17 million that we had, and now with these dollars from the federal government pursuant to the COVID aid relief, they put together a program that's going to take still some time to work and get things done. There are going to be some bumps in the road, and I wish the people out there listening, please understand, there will be some bumps in the road. But please work with our county staff as we put together a $256.8 million programs to help out this community. So if you call and lines are tied up, please understand that we're still working on some things, and we're trying to get everything back in place, and we're coming back to order. One of the things that I want to emphasize before I get to some of the members, when this talks about helping small businesses and specifically businesses in disadvantaged areas, one of the things I want to emphasize, that let's not forget the African-American minority community. Ms. Leana Lopez on a radio show this past Saturday was talking about testing, and then questions were asked about what was Hillsborough County doing to help those businesses. And we told him to hold on. I happened to come back on the show to hold on, it was coming. So we want to make sure that specifically those small businesses that are a backbone of this community and the minority and African-American businesses on our backbone, make sure they get an equal share of those dollars. The other thing is, we talked about compliance. We have to cross every T and dot every I to make sure that these dollars are utilized in the proper way, and there are forms that have to be filled out. I hope they're not making them too cumbersome for people to fill out, but make sure that we have to make sure that every I dotted, every T is crossed because these are federal dollars, and there's compliance that we have to adhere to with these dollars. So I wanted to say that. Commissioner Kemp, I'm sorry, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I really do want to echo your statements about commending our staff to prepare for this federal stimulus dollars that is specifically to address the impacts of COVID-19. We wouldn't have these dollars if we weren't dealing with a pandemic and the fact that the outcome of people not with jobs and the changes in the way business owners are going to have to do business to address the guidelines that are recommended in each of these industries is going to cost money for businesses to get back open and to be able to keep their employees safe as well as their customers safe. So I'm really pleased. Mr. Barton and I have had lots of long conversations about how do we help our smaller businesses that were not able to take advantage of the PPP money. I see there's good focus here, and I'm strongly supporting that we work to take this positive step towards making sure that we can assist not only the businesses get open, but the employees to feel safe going back to work. And for those that have to make the transition to another occupation or another opportunity, you know, consulting with small communities to teach people how to use the internet so that they can be more employable and access resources and learn more about what we're doing to keep our community safe, you know, is a whole new way of doing business. So being creative and helping those individuals that are really wanting to go back to work to be able to do so, I think, is our utmost importance, as long as we're helping them do it safely. And I'm very, very pleased to see where we are here. Thank you so very much for bringing this forward, and that's why I seconded it as fast as I could. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, oh, boy, thank you to all the staff, all the level of detail that's in here, and it's very strategic. I like how you prioritize everything, and I know you'll be coming back to us with details of the plan. Of course, I think we all know we're in very uncertain economic times, and the first thing we want to get across to our business community is really that we're open for business. And, you know, with these policies and all the help and assistance we're giving, the incentives, the grants, I think we're definitely giving that message. There's so much opportunity in here for small businesses to recover and really get back on their feet. But I think one of the most important things we have to do initially is provide the funding for sustainable jobs and really work to get our unemployment rate down as quickly as possible in Hillsborough County. And of course, I know when we fully open, some of that will happen naturally, but it's just going to take so much time. I was glad to see a couple of things in here. Of course, many of you don't know Commissioner Miller and Hagan. I started during the recession, when I came on the commission, I started a small business job incentive program to help create jobs for small businesses. So I was really happy to see that back in the plan because that was extremely successful, and so many people got to use it. Though it wasn't available in the city, I'm glad this will be countywide, so more people will be able to take advantage of it. I think the next thing that's just critically important is the money that could go directly to Career Source for workforce training. I do sit on that board, and Career Source has been working quite a bit with the Economic Development Council. And this retraining, workforce training, whatever it is, as you know, people are using this downtime to really retool themselves and their skills. And so that's why this training is going to be important. I know that we've done some initial funding already to Audrey Ziegler and the Social Service. I'd like to see us today, and I can offer this, of course, I made the original motion, but I would like to add to that motion that we send $25 million immediately to Career Source to start these worker training, workforce training programs because I think it's vital. I think it's critical, and they'll have to meet their federal guidelines. But we have to do everything we can to accelerate what we can here. And so what I'll do is I'll allow this motion to go through. Mr. Chair, you could recognize me. And, Mr. Barton, are you in agreement with that, though?
I thought Mr. Barton said they were going to do that anyway, Commissioner Murman.
Well, I think he was going to come back to us. That's why I'm asking the question. Are you doing that anyway, Mr. Barton, or where are we on the Career Source training?
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate your motion and the urgency. We feel the same way. We need to write a contract with them. So if you wanted to go ahead and authorize the amount and then allow Mike, under his authority, to go ahead and formalize the contract with them, you would save us two weeks, and we would probably be under contract by two weeks rather than bringing it back to you in two weeks. So certainly, I would welcome that, as long as you gave the authority to Mike to go ahead and authorize the contract, and you were specifying it at 25 million.
Is that, is 25 million enough?
That's a good start. You got to chew what you bite off.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, if you could come back to me after we get done with this motion, I'll make that subsequent motion.
No, why don't you withdraw your motion, restated to add to it?
Okay. So I'll move to authorize BEAT, which is the budget amendment to appropriate the $256,847,065 in the CARES Act dollars to Hillsborough County, and allocate $25 million from that to Career Source for workforce training programs and authorize Mike Merrill to execute the contract. And that's my motion.
Commissioner Overman, do you still second?
I do. I have a question, however.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, I'll second it. I do have a question.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Put your hand up, I won't forget you. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Yes. I guess you could take her if she has it to the motion, but I just, I wanted to say thank you so much to staff, again, for what I think is this very comprehensive setting out of this program, as everyone else has spoken to. Obviously, we're full of anxiety and fear about the future. We have lots of people suffering now. So I think this is what people are looking to. This is hopeful for the future, and I think it's, I'll look forward as we go through the weeks to see this progress and see what it's doing. I think it's especially important that we're looking at the businesses that weren't able to access federal help and look at that in our local community. So I very much appreciate this moving forward. I'm sure that this is, the community is just really looking to the programs that the county is doing. So I'd like to see this go as quickly as possible, and it's a very comprehensive outline.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question for Mr. Barton and Ms. Brick. In your budget amendment, are ranges of dollars for various different buckets? And I'm assuming that in Commissioner Murman's motion, that the proposed 25 million, which is 40% of the workforce training range, you offered 30 million to 60 million in that range, if I'm not mistaken. Is that, am I picking the right bucket that that would be funded? Or is it a combination of the workforce training bucket and the other buckets? I'm just concerned about the purposes and the use and the allocation among those various different areas that have a focus towards our very small businesses.
Right. You are correct. This is Ron Barton. You are correct. The 25 million, it would be our, we had anticipated that we would come out of the workforce training range of dollars. Obviously, we're going to have to continue to monitor them as to whether we end up in the high end or the low end of the range that we've allocated for discussions with you. But at this juncture, those dollars are kind of a comprehensive program that they can deliver. And so, yes, the 25 million would come out of the workforce training.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wise, I see your hand. Did you want to say something? Okay, she didn't want to say anything.
I apologize. That was on from earlier. I apologize.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Yes, I just have one last question to Ron Barton. Are you going to, I guess, obviously, I would think with a report this comprehensive, that you're going to have outcomes and deliverables attached to each one? And is that correct? And will you be able to measure it so you can report back?
Yes, ma'am. As I talked about in the presentation, you know, our expectation is that this is one small step in getting back to a local economy that's semi-normal. And so not only are we going to disperse the grants, but we want to make sure that the outcomes are there. Likewise, if there's a problem, we can recalibrate. So yes, we're going to continue to monitor, you know, the business opening. Probably the key metric, and it's a simple metric, is how many unemployed go back to work. And so that, for me, we don't have to overcomplicate this. If we're measuring it by, did a company that pre-COVID used to employ 25 people, had to let 10 of them go, and if our grant programs helped them bring those 10 people back in the next month or two, that's the outcome measurement that's key for me.
Okay, well, you're bringing a huge sense of security back to our business, our community with this. And like Commissioner Kemp said, hopefulness is in the future. So thank you again.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that takes us back to Commissioner items, beginning with F1, Commissioner Merman's item.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Okay, chickens, backyard chickens. I have, this is simple, came up during the crisis from one of my constituents who really had inquired about this back in 2012. So essentially, what I'm asking in this item is just that we will allow residents to keep eggling chickens in residential areas in proper structures, regulated manner, as currently is being done in the city of Tampa. The language is written by City Council in the city would, that's really all that's required here because that ordinance has seemed to work well for them. And so, and this is supported by Stephen Grant, our County Extension Service. They have a lot of expertise in this area. And they'll be happy to assist. The Extension Service is part of the Agriculture Development Program in the Economic Development Department. And I didn't know this, but they do have chicken workshops for small farms. And they have an expert to assist with chicken issues. So in the midst of all of our heavy topics today, what I'm asking is direct the county attorney to bring back to the board for consideration an amendment of the Land Development Code that will allow residents of unincorporated Hillsborough County to own and raise backyard chickens in residential zone areas. Any amendment to the Land Development Code would exclude roosters.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Commissioner Merman, I'm going to support the motion. I think it's a good idea. Just something for staff, though, to think about as they're drafting the language for the amendment to the LDC. Chickens can be surprisingly destructive to residential lawns. And if they're not properly kept in a coop, they will not stay confined, you know, to one property. And I can hear Commissioner Merman in your language that you would require that they be kept in a coop, but just, I want staff to think about how we're going to administer that, though, for those bad actors that, you know, aren't going to keep the coop in a proper state of repair or just try to not have their chickens in a coop, because they can become quite a nuisance, you know, when they, when they enter neighboring residences and start to scratch up the grass and everything. So just would ask staff to think about those elements.
Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I'm fine. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Seeing no further discussion, please call a row. Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Merrill?
Item F2, Commissioner Smith's item.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. So, all right, the, do you have me? Am I?
Yes. I think somebody didn't have their.
Yeah, somebody was talking. So the Emergency Policy Group, the EPG, and Mr. Merrill and our staff have done a terrific job, along with Dr. Holt and the team of health professionals from USF, in addressing the initial stages of the COVID pandemic and implementing the safer at home measures that have saved hundreds of thousands of lives in our county and successfully flattened the curve. And I just want to start with many thanks to the three commissioners on that group, Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Overman, along with the three mayors, the sheriff, and the school board chair for all their hard work in this, in this incredibly trying time. You all have all stepped up and led the way through an enormous crisis like nothing we've ever had to deal with before. The EPG, Emergency Policy Group, was designed for short emergencies, specifically hurricanes. And the local state of emergency can only be declared for seven days at a time. So we are now, as Commissioner Miller often reminds us, in uncharted territory with this group, addressing this long, ongoing pandemic and extending their emergency powers seven days at a time for several weeks now since March 12. And at this point, nobody knows how long the pandemic will go on and whether it will flatten out now only to surge again later. The future is uncertain, but it is time for this board, the County Commission, to begin discussions of how we manage the recovery phase of this pandemic. The recovery phase began on Monday, May 4, as we began to take first steps past the initial response stage. And this board, the County Commission, is in charge of the recovery phase. Our county codes, our comprehensive emergency management plan are all quite clear about this, that the EPG is in charge of the initial emergency response phase, and the B OCC, us, is in charge of the final emergency recovery phase for the county. The county attorney recently explained this to the EPG, and Mr. Merrill has also been crystal clear on this point on several occasions. Some members of the EPG have raised questions about what should be their purview. And I hope you will have all read Sheriff Cronister's excellent article saying that some of the economic recovery issues that the EPG had begun delving into should be handled by their member governments instead. And so I just thought it was important that we have a public discussion here at the county government level and clarify the roles and responsibilities of the EPG and the B OCC as we work our way through this unprecedented situation. And I thought a good first step would be to specify that all matters regarding the economic recovery phase of this pandemic should be brought to this board rather than the EPG. And so my motion is this. It's what is said in the agenda item, as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic, to direct the county administrator to address economic development strategies, economic recovery initiatives and plans, and all budgeting decisions to the Board of County Commissioners as opposed to the Emergency Policy Group. And that's my motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp seconds.
There's a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, I'm trying to figure out why, what's the need of this motion? Because even though the op-ed that was written by Sheriff Cronister, I think it's been made perfectly clear to the EPG and to this board and the city councils of Temple Terrace, Plant City in Tampa and the school board, that anything dealing with economic development strategies, economic recovery, plans, budgeting, belongs to those legislative bodies. That was, we addressed that, I think, maybe even last week. There have been some questions concerning parks and trails that some of the EPG members have asked about. And Mr. Merrill on behalf of the Hillsborough County and the mayor on behalf of the city of Tampa and the half of, Mayor Lotter on behalf of Plant City and Mayor Ross on behalf of the Temple Terrace have addressed those issues. But when it came to anything other than those, the EPG does understand that the legislative bodies, such as ours, are the ones that will address that. We are unprecedented at times. Again, I will restate that. And the EPG is initially, when it was established, was for hurricanes. We got thrust into this pandemic. And yes, we have to reconstitute ourselves with an executive order every seven days. But in no way, no how does any member of the EPG wants to take on the responsibility that belongs to the bodies of the three cities, Hillsborough County Government and/or the school board. So I see what you're saying with your item, but I think that's been made perfectly clear by the EPG, by this board and by the city councils and the mayors that are on there. But I'll still hear what others have to say. But I think that's been made perfectly clear, though.
May I respond, Commissioner?
Sure.
Right. But we have yet to have a county commission board level discussion about these roles and responsibilities. The EPG has discussed it. They have, Sheriff Cronister has put an article in the newspaper. There was some wandering off into economic matters and suggestions that the Economic Recovery Task Force would report to the EPG rather than the B OCC. I agree with you that I think the recent discussions at that group have come to an understanding. But I think it's important for us to clarify from this level what, what the roles are moving forward. And that's, that's why I thought it would be important for us to have that understanding and make that policy decision, motion here to confirm that.
Okay. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Mr. Miller, I have your same thoughts and concerns. I mean, I've been on that since I've been on the board. We, even during hurricanes, there's never a question about recovery, that every single decision, everything has always come to the county commission. I've seen several posts on Facebook about some people's concerns about the fact that we are not in, you know, that we were not making the budgeting decisions. And that just is not correct. We're not even making recovery decisions. I think when they presented the information, Craig Richard and some people, it was to give an outline, because that is the only forum where all governments would like to see the direction of the county that's not been decided. You got the decisions today are in B8. But I think that there is, I just, I don't think this is necessary. I see your point. I absolutely see your point. But there is nothing, no, no one's trying to usurp any local government's power. The city of Tampa with the council, the Temple Terrace, Plant City, and the county commission, no. With that, the purpose of the EPG is to handle the emergency. And that's exactly what we've done. And we have not made any, we have not, we've discussed some overlying thoughts about plans moving forward on economic development. But as far as decisions on strategies, recovery initiatives or plans, that's totally always been up to local government. That's why I don't think, personally, I don't think it's necessary. If anything, Commissioner Miller could go back to the EPG and, you know, refine some policy there. But I don't think anything needs to happen here. That's just my thoughts.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. And I do, I can appreciate the comments. And I think it's also important for us to recognize that, you know, as you stated, Commissioner Smith, our Emergency Policy Group history has been dealing with an emergency that, you know, we knew it was coming. It came, it took several weeks to fix, and then we moved on. And so there wasn't a longer standing need to address the public health of our citizens and how we, as an emergency policy group, as a member of it, would make recommendations or adopt policy that is focused on the public's health. Where it got a little sticky is, you know, when we tell businesses they have to close, you know, that's, that's a public health decision. And yet, the counties and the municipalities have to figure out how to help those businesses reopen safely. And so I understand it's important for us as a board to bring back to the table where we need to, as a county, to adopt programs and policies and ways of doing business in Hillsborough County as a whole. But it doesn't necessarily take any power away from the Emergency Policy Group, but it doesn't give us anymore as a Board of County Commission. The line is very clear. The Emergency Policy Group is to adopt policies that are to address an emergency and the public health and safety of our citizens as long as that emergency exists. And while I understand the spirit of your item, I think it's, as a member of the EPG, I think it's been made clear. I look forward to Mr. Richard and the Economic Development Corp's presentation, not only to the EPG, to bring their recommendations for how businesses go back to work in a, in a public safety perspective. And I expect that we will also receive a similar, as a Board of County Commission, presentation on how the industries need either the county's assistance or policies that we adopt at the county level to help those businesses and their employees. or policies that we adopt at the county level to help those businesses and their employees get back to work as safely as possible. And I'll stop there.
Okay. I don't see anyone else's hand. Commissioner Smith, are you still wanting to go through with this motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp. Please call the row. Sorry, hold on. Commissioner Overman, you trying to say something?
Oh, it's Commissioner.
Commissioner Kemp has got her hand raised.
For some reason, okay. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Smith for bringing this forward. I don't think that the implication was anything in terms of, as she made clear as she spoke of usurping local government or others usurping our power, as she said, it's uncharted territory. I think it's really good, both at our meeting as well as the other meetings that were done to just kind of clarify this, bring it forward. I think today were some of the first steps of doing that. We didn't have that just a couple of weeks ago, and I think it's really good government and for the public. I don't think this is, I think this is a discussion that we can afford to have a little bit of time and focus on. It's a healthy discussion. It's good government, and I just appreciate her bringing it up. I agree, Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Overman, Commissioner Miller, that this doesn't necessarily, this motion doesn't change anything because all of that is clearly in place. So it doesn't make a difference in terms of that, but I think it's, I think it's a good clarification for the public, and I appreciate, again, our different roles, because I think there is so much confusion about that in the public.
Thank you. I don't see any confusion at all, and I think this motion is not necessary. I think we just started the first step, what we saw today coming forth as to how we're putting economic development back in place and recovery initiatives, and I don't know why we, why this motion is necessary, so I'm going to be voting against the motion because I think everything has been perfectly clear by who has what territory we cover. I just don't understand this motion, so I'm going to be supporting the motion. Please call the row.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
No.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion failed three to four. Commissioner Miller, Hagan, Merman and Overman voted no.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, your next item is F3, Commissioner Kemp's item.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I had asked that we put forward or that this be brought to us to discuss. I know my office, I'm sure many of your offices have received all kinds of calls, contacts, people wanting to know about how they can get help, about the phones that were running, the online services, and I had called up Ms. Ziegler to find out more information, and I was hoping that we could, Ms. Ziegler could give us a report today on the number of calls we've gotten, how we're handling those calls, the online applications, how this is going and what the future of that is.
Ms. Ziegler?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just checking from this morning. Audrey Ziegler, Social Services Department. First of all, I want to thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for your interest in having me present today. I think it's a nice way to kick off the CARES funding that we're all going to be working on going forward. So thank you so much. I think it's a good time to let you all know what we've been up to and give you an overview. Commissioner Miller, I also want to thank you for the kind words this morning and support of the department and everything that we're doing. That's very much appreciated. And to all of the county commissioners, thank you so much for your support. I think I've talked to almost all of you directly through all of this, and you all have been shoulder to shoulder with me and very supportive and very understanding during these unprecedented times. So I do have a PowerPoint put together for you. It might be a little bit more than you bargained for today, but I'd like to walk you through how we put the program together and what we experienced with the overwhelming demand for these services. So let me link that up. I'm trying to. Here we go. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Okay, so the program is named the Rapid Response Recovery Assistance Program. And due to the loss of wages to households impacted by COVID-19 pandemic, Hillsborough County Social Services Department experienced a huge increase in requests for assistance for crisis intervention programs to basically help individuals get ahead of the evictions resuming and the utility services resuming disconnects. Based on that increase in request, Mr. Harness and I reached out to Mr. Merrill and explained to him the challenges that we were having, and he immediately dedicated $15 million to the department to administer to impacted households to alleviate their crisis and attempt to meet some of the demand, as I mentioned, to avoid the disconnections and the utility services being disconnected as well. Starting April 1, social services experienced, as I mentioned, twice as many requests for shelter and utility services through our existing department screening process. At that time, there was no programs in place to assist this unique population, and these were basically new customers to the department. In addition to serving the vulnerable low-income residents, we were also now looking at facing people who had been employed and able to manage on their wages and now newly employed and struggling. COVID-19 Crisis Intervention Program was put together through Social Services, the R3 Assistance Program, with, as I mentioned, the $15 million dedicated to assist the department during these unprecedented times with the unprecedented demand, and we were using, or we are using CARES Act funding, not the existing department funding. So we envisioned two separate tracks, one to keep our vulnerable low-income households being serviced by the Social Services Department and not interrupt that program or that funding, while we added this separate funding source to assist our new client base, which are those that were employed. And those, of course, are households that were impacted.
Yes.
I just want to remind Audrey to change her slides.
Yeah, her slides are progressing.
Oh, it's changed on my end.
Yeah, it's not changing here.
I'll tell you what, my end.
Audrey, this is James Brewer. If you would like for me to share your presentation, I can do so. Well, it looks like you're swishing it now.
Okay, I found the right link. I'm sorry. I was on a roll here.
Okay, that's okay.
So the overview of the program, the R3 Assistance Program was put together in 19 days, and of course, we're all working teleworking. We're not in the same office, so we didn't have the luxury of getting together in a room. So this was all put together remotely. I'm very proud of the team that worked on this, and I want to thank the Social Services Department, Human Resources, Communications, IIO, Library Services and the Customer Service Call Center for coming together and putting this program together with us. We dedicated a unique phone line, as I mentioned, so we could keep the tracks of assistance separate from our low-income vulnerable residents, and we dedicated 17 call center representatives to handle the demand. We looked at some of the models that the tax collector uses, and based on the number of call volume they experience in a month of about 35,000, with almost 30 call center reps, we figured 17 representatives in our phone bank would be adequate. We now know that wasn't the case, but that's what we had based our numbers on. We did retrain library staff, and we also used a few from the county, the county main customer service line. We had a virtual screening and eligibility documentation process on the backend so that customers were able to have a one-on-one experience to the call center, understand the program, followed by a link being sent to them where they would have instructions on how to provide their verification documentation. As you mentioned in the previous presentation for CARES funding, we are required to dot our i's, cross our t's and validate that the households we're serving have been impacted by COVID-19. The eligibility criteria is very simple. We basically want to verify that the household residents do live in Hillsborough County since we're using our dedicated funds, that they were actively employed prior to the pandemic, that they did experience a loss of wage due to hours being reduced or being laid off from the pandemic, and they are experiencing past-due housing obligations for their shelter expenses and their utility bills. We also wanted to make sure that they had limited liquid assets, so whereas those households that are able to use their funding that they have saved, we could free up the funding for those households that did not have a savings to utilize. We launched the program with the call center I mentioned on Monday, April 27, expanded our call center hours that day through the duration because we did have a telephone number glitch, which we were able to fix with IIO in a matter of 90 minutes. We switched to another line, and due to the high demand of calls, we immediately switched on the third day to another mechanism for application. The number of calls we received, 64,720 calls within the three days, and just to give you a frame of reference, we typically handle about 4,000 calls in Social Services, and that particular line that we were hoping to reserve for our low-income residents received 53,468 calls last month. We ended up with the program concluding at 1,891 prescreened households by the call center, and with the process we worked on with the Communications Department, opened an online application, and that Wednesday, within 12 hours, we had reached another 3,000 households that had been able to be prescreened. All eligibility slots at this time, at that time, on April 29, were obligated to funding. I wanted to provide you a little bit of breakdown as to where those applicants come from. 48% in unincorporated county, 2% in Temple Terrace, 48% in the city of Tampa, and 2% from Plant City. And that holds pretty true, pretty standard to what we typically experience in our breakdown of households that apply. So that was a little bit unique that it carried over to even the COVID pandemic need. Here's a breakdown of some of the services and what people ask for. As you can see, the utility services are pretty high, and those that are homeowners with a mortgage obligation are a little over 1,000. So what are we doing now, our next steps? We're currently reviewing all of the eligibility documentation submitted by the residents, and we will begin processing those eligible cases hopefully this week. We did work with the clerk's office, and we have a backend process to hopefully expedite the payment process to the vendors, and the call center does remain staffed, so as people have questions, concerns, wanting to know where there's opportunity for additional funding, we have someone to answer the phone and continue that dedicated phone line open. For right now, we're looking at keeping that phone available next week and the following week. One of the things that is, that really says to what Hillsborough County is doing is that Hope County and Orange County have reached out to me and are pending all of our information so that they can launch their program. I think there's a lot that they can learn from us, and I think there's a lot they can maybe not have to go through, not have to learn the hard way like we did with how to handle the demand that will be coming at them. Something additional that we were just made aware of late last week is some of the low-income vulnerable population funding that we currently utilize for Social Services through the Community Services Block Grant and the Low Income Home Energy Grant will be expanded and have a different phase where we'll not only see an increase in the funding but also dedicated to households impacted by COVID-19. Something that's unique about the CSBG grant is that they've extended or expanded out their federal poverty guideline minimum or maximum threshold to 200% of the federal poverty guideline. So these grants are also getting very creative in ensuring that households that had been employed have the opportunity to be served and not be in further crisis. That's all I have today. I do want to thank Mr. Merrill for being so responsive. Of course, the Board of County Commission, Mr. Carl Harness helped us, Bonnie Wise has been on the phone with me quite a bit, Tom Fester, Leana Lopez, IIO, the Library Services, Human Services, obviously the Social Services staff. It's been a collaborative effort, and I know everybody's sick of me, and I know you're sick of all of my calls that are coming to your offices, but the demand was 64,000 on one phone and 54,000 on the other phone. I hope that can ease your mind and give you a comfort level that we did plan. However, we could have never planned for that volume that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. And again, job well done, job well done. Ms. Kemp? Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. Audrey, I just wanted to say, and I'm sure I speak for everyone, we're deeply grateful. It's just astonishing, the need that has been out there, and I really appreciate you laying it out, both for the public and for this board to understand. I can't even imagine the overwhelmingness of it, and to also understand the coordination of the departments. I'm, I can imagine that Orlando and other areas will learn a lot from what has happened, and this is just an incredible, tremendous, wonderful program that you've put together here, and I do appreciate all the county staff and everyone else who has volunteered or who is part of, part of getting this done. It's just an incomprehensible practically effort in this short time with this much need. I know that you outlined that you had 64,000 calls and you were able to kind of screen right now about 2,000 of them, and I'll ask you just, you know, what I'd asked before. So how, how does this move forward in terms of the screening, the calls, how will it work in the future for following up on all this need?
So one of the things we're going to do right now is prioritize our, and focus our efforts on the applications that we do have. We're going to be working with Metropolitan Ministries to revisit an agreement that we have in place, a draft agreement that we have in place, so we're hoping to actually transition some of those prescreened applications over to them to get an expedited process, and we should know more about that later this week. But as the Social Services Department and Metropolitan Ministries is able to determine eligibility on the cases that we do have, get those payments out, what we're hopeful is that we'll be able to open up additional spots depending on the funding that's obligated. As of right now, it appears the funding is obligated, but if there are households that did not comply with the request or might have even applied thinking that they were eligible and now kind of seeing what's involved and recognizing that they may not be eligible, so they may not, they may not follow through, and that'll also open up additional spots. So I'll be working closely with Leana Lopez to figure out the best way to move forward, whether it be with an online application going forward or in tandem with a call center so that we don't overload your systems again. But I think the outreach that we did, and to their credit, the communications did, really highlighting the good work that the county did, kind of created a little bit of a pressure cooker, and the minute that phone line opened, everybody was, you know, ready to get assistance and, you know, eager to get connected and expeditiously, too. So we're working on it. It's not as, unfortunately, it's not as quickly as I had hoped to, but we do have an accounting process. We do have a clerk's office process. But again, in the name of compliance for the funding, we're going to take the appropriate measures and we'll get the funding out to the community, and we're doing the best we can in staying within compliance.
And I would just ask that the county administrator for future meetings, I just think this is so critical that we understand as this moves along, maybe it will be lesser reports, maybe it'll be greater reports, but that we keep touch with all the work that you're doing, that we get updates at every county commission meeting so that we can understand the need and how we're addressing the needs and perhaps, if need be, I don't know, you know, take some action with regards to that, but I would ask the county administrator to put this as an item on, on every commission agenda in the future before that, you know, until, until no longer, I think, becomes this critical.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up, so we have to receive this report. So Commissioner Kemp, you're going to make a motion, you're going to make a motion to receive the report?
I'll make a motion to receive the report and to also add that we get regular updates at every commission meeting in the future.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Who's second?
Merman.
Oh, Merman, somebody, okay. That motion back. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you very much, and I'll keep this brief. Audrey, you know I call your entire department rock stars, and you certainly have shown up like super men and women that you are. I do have a question, however, you know, what you're suggesting in, you know, we've gotten a lot of applications processed and we're looking to fund those, and you've indicated that it's Somebody. Okay. Motion by Commissioner. Commissioner, you recognize?
Thank you very much. And I'll keep this brief. Audrey, you know I call your entire department rock stars, and you certainly have shown up like super men and women that you are. I do have a question, however. You know, what you're suggesting, and you know, we've gotten a lot of applications processed, and we're looking to fund those. And you've indicated that it's, you know, that the monies that you previously had are allocated, and you anticipate seeing more come. But if, is, in your experience with these kinds of applications, given the new rules associated with funding, based on the calls that you have pending right now and the applications you have pending, what are we looking at in the way of funding need? Because clearly, we don't have it. But I think it's important for all of us leaders to recognize what the need is. Can you help with that? Do you have some idea of what that number looks like?
I can work with the internal accounting department team and get you a projection. I can tell you that our grants through your motions today just renewed April 1st. So we're looking pretty good as far as CSBG and Lahip go. And those also will have an increase for care spending, which will come before this board to vote. So I think it might be a little bit too soon to tell. And I think our efforts will be focused on the COVID-19 side for quite some time. I currently have the social services team divided into two different sections. One is addressing low income and one side addressing COVID-19, which is also creating somewhat of a bottleneck because neither side is working at full capacity. So once we get through those COVID-19 applications, I think we'll better be able to see where we're at. And I'm really hoping that the evictions don't resume too quickly, and the utility companies don't resume service disconnects too quickly. And that will buy us some time to work on these cases and make sure they're eligible as we process them.
Thank you very much. Because that is my concern. We have individuals that may qualify because of the low income. And then we have other individuals that have not been able to return to work. But even as we do open the door for going back to work, may not be able to because they have an at-risk person in their home. And, you know, multiple generations, they just don't feel safe going back into the job they had. So they're in a difficult situation where they can't support their family. And while that may not be part of the criteria, it's going to be a need. So I just can't thank you enough for the report and for the work that you're doing. But I do believe that it's important for us to recognize what that need looks like and how we might adjust our policies to the COVID-19 response to address those that are in financial distress because of their circumstance as it relates to COVID-19. But thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith and Merman to receive the report. See you for the discussion. Please, call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, that just leaves item A71 that was pulled by Commissioner Smith for discussion.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And I'm going to share my screen just a second here. And there, can you see that and hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So Commissioners, there's two charts here on the handout that I provided as supplemental material. One for each water impact fee assessment unit, the Northwest Assessment Unit, the South Central Assessment Unit. Those are two different areas in our county. And unlike other impact fees, and unlike most counties, with the water impact fees, the developer doesn't just pay this in one lump. Our county lets the developer pay just a small portion of the impact fee, the builder payment, and then they can pass off the rest to the homeowner, the homeowner's assessment. So in the current fee breakdown, the current fee we've had in place for some years now, the builder pays $225 of a builder payment, and the homeowner is assessed 3,300, $3,325. So this homeowner assessment is then put on the homeowner's property tax bill every year for 20 years. And this is their payment. In the current break fee, the homeowner pays $290 every year on their tax bill. And that includes 5% interest plus a collection fee. So it adds up over time to this final total that the homeowner pays $5,800, even though the impact fee isn't anywhere near that. And so, by the way, the 5% interest is not a great deal. The homeowner, if it was in their mortgage, would be paying 3.5% interest on that little loan we're making. The proposed column shows the new fee that is being proposed in our new impact fee study for water fee. So the higher fee includes now the AGRF, we're reinstating, that was removed in 2014. So the builder payment goes up to $2,303, and the homeowner assessment goes up to 4,333. And the total is this, and the homeowner's assessed payment would be 3,86, and they would end up paying 7,700 over 20 years. That's in the Northwest Assessment Unit. So the South Central Assessment Unit, can you see that part as well?
Yes.
The South Central Assessment is a higher fee. And so the homeowner's annual payment there would go up to $471. The builder payment is, in this future proposed fee, is calculated as 10% of the impact fee plus the entire AGRF. So that's how they get this builder payment in both districts. And then the homeowner is simply assigned the balance of the payment, and that's broken up into their 20-year payments on their annual tax bill. But this last column, then, is an alternate way we might divide the fees in a way that would not raise the cost on the homeowner's tax bill, keeping their payment the same, keeping it at $290 a year, instead of raising it to 386 or 471. And then they would end up paying over 20 years the same amount that they do now, $5,800, instead of that being raised to 7,700 or 9,400. So we would be saving the homeowner's $1,900 to $3,600 if we went with an alternate fee breakdown like I'm suggesting here in the last column. Now, of course, personally, I'd like to see the developer pay the whole fee upfront and eliminate the homeowner assessment system entirely. But the last time we discussed that, the board was divided. So now, what I'm asking you all to consider is a compromise, a way to raise the impact fee to the level suggested by our independent consultant study without raising the cost to the homeowner. So leaving the homeowner's cost the same on their tax bill as it has been this whole time, and asking the builder payment to be raised a little bit. So I'm not asking for your vote on this today. I'm just asking you to think about this over the next several weeks between now and the public hearing. And I'm hoping you'll go over these charts I provided, and hopefully, you'll consider a compromise that sets the builder payment a bit higher so that the homeowner's cost on their tax bill is not raised any higher. And finally, I want to just confirm with the county attorney that when this comes back to us in the public hearing, it can be noticed in a way that we will be able to consider this type of alternate breakdown of the fee between the builder payment and the homeowner assessment.
Yes, Commissioner, this is Christine Beck. That is my understanding, but I would like Hank Ennis to confirm that if he could.
This is Hank Ennis with the County Attorney's Office. And yes, we can craft the notice that goes out to the homeowners in a way that you can consider this if the board chooses to do so on June 17th.
Thank you. That's all I'm asking you to do, Commissioners, is think about this and consider for our final hearing. So with that, I'll move the item.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp.
Kemp.
Commissioner Kemp, you want to thank Commissioner Smith? I think that's what you really want to do.
Yes, I do want to thank Commissioner Smith because I think it took a lot of work to put this together. And I think it's a really good compromise. And, you know, I knew that it was costing homeowners a lot more through interest payments and the clerk's fees and everything else. $1,900 is a pretty large.
Let me say something here. Hold on.
I don't think I should be interrupted as I'm speaking.
We're debating an issue. We'll finish your statement, but we're debating an issue to set a public hearing. I don't understand this, but go ahead.
Yeah. I'd just like to thank her for putting this forward. Thank you very much, and thank you for the clarifications. I know it took a lot of work.
I see other hands up, but I don't understand why we're debating what Commissioner Smith brought forth and what the agenda item is just to set a public hearing. So unless we're going to address the item being set at a public hearing, I don't think we have a debate on what Commissioner Smith brought forth. Commissioner Merman, is that what you want to do?
Exactly. I mean, it has, basically, they've brought an item forward that now I'm worried is going to be included in the public hearing that should not really have been brought up today and been a part of this item. That's my thoughts.
You're absolutely right. It should not have been brought up. The item on this, considered agenda, was a set of public hearings on June 17th. And Commissioner Smith brought up a whole completely different subject matter and was not pertaining to setting a public hearing. And then asked a question, could it be included in the public hearing agenda item? And I think that just throws everything off a limbo. Commissioner Merrill?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to bring up a similar caution. I'm not sure exactly what Christine Beck had said before, but what we don't want, I mean, we've talked now at length about how important it is to get fees and rates in place for water and sewer so that we can begin completing the, begin work on the South County plant. So what I would suggest is that the proposal that Commissioner Smith is bringing forward not be lumped together with the resolution to set rates and fees because I don't want that to become then subject to this other issue and then possibly not get rates and fees passed, which we desperately need. So separate the two issues. They're really two separate issues. And then you can accomplish what Commissioner Smith wants, but also move the rates and fees forward.
Commissioner Smith made a motion to approve A71, which is set a public hearing. Am I correct, Commissioner Smith, that was your motion? Commissioner Smith?
I need to, I'd like to respond to some of the points that have been made here. The item before us is to set the public hearing with the information that is included. The information includes the policy decision to set the builder payment along at the same time. When this comes to us at the public hearing, it includes the proposed policy decision to set the builder payment at 10% of the impact fee plus the AGRF, as I showed in the proposed column. I am today clarifying what is going to be coming before us before we vote on the item of setting a public hearing. So I'm trying to clarify that information. The decision that comes before us does include the policy decision as to what rate to set the builder payment and what rate to set the homeowner assessment. That's part of the public hearing. It is part of the study. It doesn't need to be separated out. It's a decision, a policy decision we make. And I was hoping to bring you information today so that, to understand that that would be part of the hearing and that that is something that this board can decide when it comes forward. So I'm clarifying that item.
I think what you've done is muddied the waters, as far as I'm concerned, because we were just basically setting a public hearing, Commissioner Smith. That's the only thing the item is saying. You went above and beyond with the public hearing. It said that Mr. Merrill has an excellent point that you're now asking that the advertisement includes your information, which I think is absolutely wrong, but we'll see. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Beck.
Ms. Beck?
Yes, sir.
Can Commissioner Smith's proposal come as a commissioner item and be on the agenda as a related item to the public hearing?
Yes, sir. That's a very good suggestion based on this conversation that would solve the issue, it would appear.
Commissioner Smith, are you willing to just procedurally have it come in that way?
If that actually works, if the, but was, if the county attorney is certain that we could make both decisions separately like that, I'd be fine with that. It's my understanding, though, that the public hearing actually includes that specific builder payment. So I don't see how we could have the public hearing and approve it at the 10% rate that is proposed, and then separately have a commissioner item that resets it. But I'm not an attorney, so if that would work, that would be fine. I just want the board to consider that alternative.
Chairman Miller, do I still have the floor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm not, I don't know that I'm ready to vote until that legal question's answered by Ms. Beck or Mr. Ennis with respect to whether or not her proposal needs to be advertised and included as part of the public hearing or if it could come in as a related item.
I'm going to ask Hank Ennis to address that, please.
Hank Ennis with the County Attorney's Office. The resolution that you will be approving on June 17th does state the amount of the builder payment that you will be approving. Currently, the builder payment includes the full AGRF, which now is zero, but we're proposing to increase that, plus then a percentage of the impact fee. If Commissioner Smith wants to increase the percentage of the impact fee in the builder payment, that would have to be approved as part of the rate resolution that's presented to the board on June 17th.
Okay. So I'm prepared to move the consent item, but I see no issue with advertising it broadly in such a way that it would allow for Commissioner Smith's idea to at least be considered. That doesn't mean that this board will ultimately adopt her proposal, but I'd certainly like to see the advertisement, you know, worded in such a way that that can be discussed.
Mr. Merrill?
So I'll say it again, that, you know, we haven't had a chance to study this, and we need to get those rates adopted and not have the vote and the discussion be hung up by this other issue. Now, we rely heavily on the assessment program. We issue bonds against assessments to help pay for water and sewer infrastructure. Bond council needs to look at this. I don't know if they have. So what I'm saying is, to do something today and advertise it in a way that potentially adversely affects the outcome, when neither my financial staff nor our bond council nor our financial advisor had a chance to look at it, is a risk that the board is taking that we won't be able to adopt the rates we need to adopt when this is brought back for public hearing and will have yet another delay. I'm simply saying, go ahead and advertise it as it's currently advertised. If there is another issue to deal with in terms of the assessment program, that can be dealt with, but as a separate issue. It's not about how much you set. It's not about how much you set the fees. It's about how the thing works together as a package, because we rely on those assessments and we structure financings based on them. So I think we can get to the place that Commissioner Smith wants to go, but not by bundling everything together and potentially constraining our ability to do what we need to do at the public hearing. But it's up to the board.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, and yeah, there's a lot of confusion. Of course, we did not vote to do away with the assessment unit, and I think that's really the basic, underlying theme of what is being proposed. We should not be entertaining any proposal with A 71, just plain and simple. That's actually, I think, what is being proposed as out of order. That's just my thoughts. But I guess I'm going to ask Christine Beck. I mean, also, wouldn't it change the assessment unit policy that was approved by the board?
Sorry, Commissioner, the only way that the assessment unit or the assessment program can be changed is through a separate advertised public hearing, as I understand it.
Well, doesn't what Commissioner Smith was trying to do, doesn't that constitute a change?
So this was an issue that Hank Ennis worked on yesterday, so I really need him to address that.
Okay, because I think it does, but I'll wait and hear from him.
Hank Ennis with the County Attorney's Office. The impact fee assessment unit program is set up to assess the individuals or the balance of the impact fee that is due, that they have to pay over a 20-year period. If we increase the impact fee payment upfront in the builder payment, I don't think that would necessarily need to change the impact fee assessment unit program, because still they would be assess the balance of the impact fee that is required to be paid over the 20-year period. So I think the only thing that really needs to change right now is the rate resolution to increase the amount paid in the builder payment to include an additional cost or additional amount of the impact fee as proposed by Commissioner Smith.
May I have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So to clarify this, actually, you're increasing the percentage of the builder payment, not assessing, they're not getting the balance. The, as I understand from the presentation, the customer is getting the balance after the builder payment is assessed a different amount than what is in the assessment unit policy.
They will be paying a higher amount, yes.
But it's a higher percentage.
Correct.
Yeah, I just don't think we should be debating this today, but I also think it involves changing the assessment unit policy. That's just my thoughts, because going forward, we are actually changing the assessment unit policy on how these rates are going to be divided. So I'm not going to be, I would not support it going with the resolution at all, because it will tie up all the plans that George Cassidy and his team have to get things moving to help supply water into South County.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to direct the County Attorney's Office to structure the advertising.
We have a motion on the floor already.
And that's to approve item A 71, correct?
Thanks for adding something to it. Am I correct, Commissioner Smith?
No, I only asked you all to consider this information between now and June 17, when the hearing comes.
So what was your motion?
Move the item. And the item includes a policy decision that we can make at that time.
Commissioner Miller, Mr. Chairman, I had forgotten that there was a motion on the floor to approve the item, so I'll make a motion to amend, to have the advertisement include the necessary language to allow for discussion and debate of Commissioner Smith's proposal.
Second, this is Commissioner Kemp.
Commissioner White, could you restate your motion, please?
Yes, a motion to amend, and the amendment would be to have the advertisement from the County Attorney's Office include language that would allow for discussion and debate of Commissioner Smith's proposal at the public hearing.
Let me ask, let me, we have an amendment by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Ms. Beck, wouldn't that, if that amendment passes, wouldn't that expand the original motion that was to pass this? Would that expand that and make it very, very broad and not make it germane to what the original motion would be?
Commissioner, if I could just ask, if Hank could opine on whether this is even necessary in order to allow the discussion of these options on June 17, is there any change that needs to be made to the advertisement, Hank?
Hank Ennis, County Attorney's Office. The advertisement will speak to adopting a rate resolution addressing the builder payment and all the other fees, too. We always drafted very broadly initially to allow the board to discuss what they would like to discuss regarding the fees and charges in the rate resolution. So in essence, Christine, you're right, the ad will be already drafted in a way where this type of language can be considered.
In that case, I'll withdraw my motion to amend.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve A 71. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
No, I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand down.
Okay. Please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Merrill, I think the only thing we have left is future discussion items, are correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we have one person from this morning that I called his name, and he wasn't able to connect with us, and I'm being told he may still be with us, is Chris Bowles, still with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
You recognize, so you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. I bet you everyone's ready for a sandwich right now, huh? Oh, I do appreciate you allowing me to speak today after my early morning electronic fauxpas. My name's Chris Bowles, I'm with Hillsborough County Firefighters, also a resident of Hillsborough County. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank all of you again for your continued support, your first responders, public safety officers, and frontline healthcare workers. Again, your actions and forethoughts for our community and its needs are so greatly appreciated by all of us. As we enter into another month with extreme and drastic changes to our community and lifestyles, the women and men of Hillsborough County Firefighters are continuing to adjust our practices and protocols to these unfamiliar times, and as well as beginning to prepare ourselves for our annual hurricane season. June is going to be upon us shortly. Hillsborough County Firefighters also considers ourselves to be the guardians and caretakers of our community's health and well-being, and that we all share a commitment to our mutual mission of improving the lives of the citizens of Hillsborough County. The items on today's consent agenda listed from A 36 through A 40 ensure that we are going to be able to carry forth with this mission effectively and efficiently, and thank you for doing so. Item A 65 was also a very important component of the firefighter's job. It provides for the wellness of your firefighters who are out there on the front line every day through LifeScan. To date, this benefit has saved the lives of nearly 100 firefighters over the years by identifying a number of serious health issues that were previously undiagnosed or unknown, and words cannot truly express our gratitude for this life-saving benefit. On a final note, I wanted to inquire about a previously passed motion and agenda item made by Commissioner Overman and Merman passed last June. Funding was allocated and set aside for the building of two central fire stations in Central Brandon and Sun City, and those stations, as well as a number of others, were identified through Fire Rescue Master Plan and were prioritized as having the greatest impact on those local communities. I'm of the understanding that the building of these stations will not meet those original timeframes expected, and both external and internal concerns have been raised leading to this delay. Hope is that the board will request a formal update and inquiry on this motion, of the reasons for the delay and investigate any actions that need to be taken to expedite their construction. Citizens of these communities that were identified, as well as those firefighters of those same areas, are hoping to receive the much-needed relief that was granted last year. On a final thought, I would just like to give, actually, the board this morning, nominating and appointing Bonnie Wise to the county administrator was an excellent choice, and your Hillsborough County firefighters support her 100%, and like to thank Mike Merrill for his years of service to the community, and hopefully he finds himself with a well-deserved respite come this June. Thank you all again. Take care, stay healthy, and remain hopeful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, future discussion items, are there any future discussion items? Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Mr. Chair, I just want to get, if I can get a list of all impact fees that have been collected since 2016 and what zones they've been invested in. And this will have to be an agenda item, but I'd like to get that information, if I can, Steph.
Or Steph, you got that?
It was all impact, all impact fees, you said, Ken?
Yes, Mike, please.
Okay.
Thanks.
Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
And I'd like to ask the county attorney to come back to our board with an analysis of doing away with the RP 2 by a complan amendment, if they could come back to the board with that information.
Did you hear that, Ms. Beck?
Yes, sir, we will do that.
Okay. I don't see any other hands. Is there any other business to come before today, Mr. Merrill?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank you all for being on the virtual business meeting. We had a few bumps in the road, but that's okay. That's to be expected. So everyone stay safe, and we adjourn.
Thank you.